Good evening, everybody. The time is now 5:05 and welcome to the Monroe County Council's special meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, and we have a quorum, so we will go ahead and get started. Looking to my left here, we have all seven council members present. Fidel, Wilt, Deckard, Iverson, Henry, and Hawk. So we will go ahead and proceed. So we have next up on our agenda, which is the adoption of tonight's agenda. So does anybody have any amendments that they would like to make to tonight's agenda? Nope. Okay. Seeing none, since all of us are here in person, all those of, uh, excuse me, all those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. All right, next up, we will do what we've been doing throughout this month and a half of budget season, which is to look to the auditor's office for the 4B presentations. So I'm going to look at the auditor, who has also looked at Ms. Woodruff. So please take it away.
Good evening, council. On the screen, you should see the simple calculation for the deficit as it stands right now. On line six, you can see the simplified deficit across all budgets within the county. We also added a new line that shows the deficit if we include the tax cap impact and the $3 million budgeted in rainy day. And that is assuming that we do not use those appropriated dollars in rainy day. Down below, we have a deep dive calculation, and we have added those county fund numbers next to the state fund numbers to help kind of match everything up. We also added a cap column in column J where you can see the deficit per fund. And if we hide those middle columns here, you can see that within the levy funds, we are, you know, around 6.9 million deficit across those levy funds as we are right now. If you'd like us to go into any specific 4Bs, we're happy to do that, or we can leave it at a simple overview at this point.
All right, so does anybody have any questions? Looking to my right, and then looking to my left, is any, okay. All right, well, thank you very much. All right, next up is item number four.
Counsel, I would like to make a motion to reinstate the longevity amounts and the corresponding FICA to all 2026 budgets.
Second.
All right, thank you. As a point of privilege, I'm going to, I prepared some notes here, since we got a packed room, and I'm sure this is what you all are here for, plus those are, or that are virtual. So I know many of you are here tonight because of council's vote last Tuesday to eliminate longevity is on your mind. Last week, during a nearly six-hour meeting, this council has worked really hard, as we've done since day one of budget presentations, which started on August 26th, to reduce the deficit of the 2026 proposed budgets. It was at our meeting that all seven council members voted unanimously to remove longevity pay for our county employees. After our unanimous vote the very next day, many of you have reached out via text, email, phone calls, providing your feedback, even though there was a mass call for employees to come in and show up for tonight's meeting. As I mentioned in the email that I sent out on October 3rd, as council president, I think a good leader assumes responsibility for things when they go well and when they don't go well, and I wish local government, other officials, and some of our state and federal leaders would also do what I'm doing, which is to take full responsibility of the way that tonight, or last week's decision was taken. We've been doing a really hard job this entire time of budget season, so I do not fault any council member that is up here for the work and the thoughts that have gone in. However, we could have had more discussions related to what we did, and for that, I will assume responsibility, and I will say I am sorry. Since the beginning of this year, the council has been following the ramifications of SEA1 and how it would freeze the way that this county and other 91 counties across this state will go about doing our business. You can thank Governor Braun for signing this into law, and since we had this, this county, since the beginning of this year, has had KSA pauses, PAC pauses, and taken the advice from our financial advisor groups, our auditor and her staff, and our council staff to prepare for this very moment of our budget cycle. We have been saying for a while now that we have to be careful with our spending, and we've tried to do that all 2025. Also, in the presidential letter that I sent out, I specifically asked for all elected and department heads ahead of 2026 to help us with a few things, with significantly reducing your budgets, so that we can try to, in order to retain, rather, our county employees and try to implement a COLA, 3% COLA increase. That was my decision. Some of the elected heads and officials worked with their liaisons, understood the assignment, got the work done, and for that, we appreciate those of you that did that. Unfortunately, some did not, some pushed back, and we tried to do what we could do, and you know who you are. When some departments and elected officials ran into barriers when it came to certain projects that they were trying to achieve, or equipment to clean up of years of neglect, this council stepped in and funded these initiatives. This council has also given COLA increases to the tune of 8%, one year alone, and we've also given one-time bonuses to help with the expenses. This council has played chess with moving with positions such as the Health Department and certain funds, so that we can try to help every single person regardless of citizenship status or birthright, because diseases and illnessness know no citizenship status, period. We have also, unfortunately, during that discussion, had to move those funds back because the funds that we currently have in the general will not allow us to do those things. And I would like to remind everybody, when some of us did not want to vote in favor of certain KSA positions, majority of this council voted in favor of them. I know that everybody thinks that with our current political climate calls for all of us to be outraged at our government all the time, but this Monroe County Council is doing the best that we can with what we have. We are not incompetent and unintelligent individuals, as some of the emails have stated that we've received. We are council members who at times might not do everything that employees, or department heads, elected officials, and members of the public deem as fair or always right. We are council members who took an oath and are simply trying to do a tough job, especially with this year's budget, to make sure that we are not spending outside our means. Our council staff, our auditor, Ms. Molly Tournick, excuse me, Ms. Molly Tournick King, and this entire council has dedicated countless hours, 34 hours in budget meetings alone that have been recorded, and that's not even counting the many hours that we spend with elected liaisons in doing this work in private. In conclusion, despite these budget restrictions imposed by the Indiana Journal Assembly, I have confidence in my council colleagues for us to reconsider our earlier decision regarding longevity pay. I also hope that if we vote to reinstate longevity pay for 2026, which I want to be clear for anybody in the back, those that are watching along, and those that will watch later, I am in favor of, we also need to make sure that we are making this equitable for all employees, and I will say an emphasis on all employees. Hopefully, some of those alternatives could be exploring options for step, increasing step pays, but that work will have to be done starting with the January season. So with that, I said what I said, I will stand 10 toes down and on my five-foot bunny, and I will open up to all council members for this discussion. Thank you for allowing me to have that point of privilege. Yes, Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for folks attending tonight, and thank you for your comments. I'd like to start by saying that based on what the auditor's office has presented, we have a duty to close a deficit hole in our budget, and when we look at across all funds, to be looking north of 6 million is a significant hole. And I think we have to honor the fact that over the past month, we've done incredible work to look at supply and service and other account lines to find every dollar we can to reduce before we get to personnel, which we know is the largest cost in the county. We also have to honor the fact that when we look at the pie chart of the county budget, that over 60% of the county budget is criminal justice, and of the general fund, 11 million or about a fifth of it is healthcare. You could make an argument that we are a criminal justice and healthcare company and how we fund things. These are all the things that we're weighing while trying to protect the most important thing, which is our workforce. So I, first of all, feel it's our duty to pass a balanced and sustainable budget. Whatever we do at this point has to be offset with other cuts in the budget. There's really no way around it to get to a balance. We have local reporting today that suggests that our colleagues and other governments in the county are having a much harder go at it. The city of Bloomington has a double-digit deficit that they're fighting and closing in ways that we don't do in county government. Of course, we all know that one of the tools that would be available that we have avoided so far is a reduction in force, which has not been a luxury that the Indiana University or the Monroe County Community School Corporation has been able to do. We've managed to avoid that so far by looking at where else to cut things in the budget to preserve the workforce we have to make sure folks have jobs come January 1. And so when we look at all that, we need to look at the offsets for how we're going to go about this. So not to reduce force, but also to honor what else we're protecting for our county employees, the fact that we contribute 3% to the perf, which is not something every county does, that we also have a generous self-insurance, and for folks that are employees that are insuring their entire families, that's a $9600 a year benefit on top of salary. We're trying to save that, too. And so when we add up self-insurance and the 3% of perf and potentially a COLA compared to what the longevity line is, we have to find that balance. Last thing, I think we have to say it, it happened before I got here to council, but it's important to say that when the council adopted step increases, that is another form of longevity. We are the only county, the only county in Indiana, that has a longevity through steps and a longevity through one-time bonus. And so one thing that I think we should do, however we move forward here into the next year or two, is to do some serious reform on the steps. There's no reason to cap it at where we do, we can easily take it to 25 and 30 years, but that requires some work to think through how to preserve one aspect of longevity that we do offer employees. So tonight, as we talk through this and hear from folks, I think we need to look for those offsets, otherwise, we will be the other story in the paper with the city, and I hate to throw them under the bus in that way, but we don't, we have to find the balanced budget because whatever we don't do tonight will be exponentially more painful in '26, '27, and '28, as revenue drops, as the tax structure changes, and I don't want to kick the can any farther down the road. The ounce of prevention is worth the pound of cure here, as Benjamin Franklin might have said years ago. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anybody over here else to my right that would like to make any comments on anything? Nope. Looking to my left, anybody want to make comments? Yes, Counselor Wilt?
Yeah, I don't have a prepared statement, but I do agree with aspects of both of what my colleagues have said. I think that it's important for us to, to be careful about how we roll out changes for folks, and perhaps last week, we were not careful, we were careless. That is something that I regret. I'm the one who put forward the motion, and I've talked about this as a tool for several years. To me, it felt like we had had the discussions, and that's not what it felt like for everyone else, and so I apologize, I don't like to do things that way. That said, I'm also very keenly aware of Counselor Henry's point that we are faced with some really difficult decisions around the numbers, and we have done, I, everything that I can think of to avoid losing positions in the county, and that, that is the place from which the longevity decision and discussion last week came. I truly was like, well, this is something that we've been advised against having, and therefore feels like something we could, a step we could take toward closing the deficit. We, whatever we decide tonight on this particular issue, I would be very much in support of reforming the grids with the steps and extending those out further. It makes little sense to stop them arbitrarily at a certain number of years. In the past, I haven't looked at it that way because we had other means of rewarding longevity. So I'm not, at this point, in favor of reversing our decision from last week because there's no fiscal compelling reason to do so. We still have a lot to cut, and it seems like one of the more prudent things to cut, given all of that.
Thank you. Anybody else over here? Yeah, Counselor Deckard.
Well, I also don't have anything prepared, but that, anyone that's ever watched a council meeting knows, I generally don't have anything prepared too much, and that's why I talk sometimes a little bit too long. Our meeting the other night, was that a week ago? One week, one day, right? Our meeting a week ago was the longest one I've ever been in in this session, and we all were elected to do this job and figure it out, in both good times and bad, kind of like a marriage. You take that oath and you figure it out, in good times and bad. And as the hour got later, and I's looked for more and more things to do, I think this council began to grasp towards what Counselor Wilt called tools to do it, to figure it out, and things that were here, there, and everywhere, and we continue to do that. We will be continuing to do that after this agenda item tonight. Looking back at that, I do believe that my vote was well-intentioned on trying to figure out the problem, but I also recognize what Counselor Crossley said very well about the timing of that and the effect on people in here, particularly people that are sitting in this audience. And I will say this, when I came into this office in 2019, the first thing I heard as I visited department heads is how previous councils had been towards employees. And they didn't have to tell me too much because I came from an employee. I literally was raised up in a county employee family, and some of the things that department heads told me were how difficult things were, micromanaging from council, not taking care of people, overwatching them, et cetera. And so I've always operated with the philosophy of trying to help as much as I could. Under the dollars, we had to not be that counselor, as long as the dollars were there. We have hit a wall with difficulty right now, and while I am very much in favor of reversing where I was a week ago and restoring the longevity cuts, I know that the days ahead are going to be filled with very difficult decisions, and we're all going to have to own that together. I will say this also, and this is literally based on, we received a memo from FSG regarding some things earlier today, and it was basically doing this. And if you go that way, and if you go this way, and watch out for this, and if you turn around south and jump around three times, it was some of the worst theatrics I've ever seen. Every news that seems to come from Indianapolis or elsewhere seems to get more confusing. We seem to have legislators that either don't know what's going on, or they've given up, or, I don't know, I think they live somewhere else, I don't know, I don't know what's going on. We also have everyone watching them and speculating that, and that's literally trying to watch shifting sand go through an hourglass that has no glass. And the more I watch it, the more I cross my eyes, and I suddenly for once feel like I'm not the stupid one in the room. I don't know what's going on up there. I honestly don't. Taxpayers, you're going to have to ask them because they sure as hell aren't listening to us. In my time on this council, and several of these counselors up here in that time, we have gone with a vengeance after salaries and COLAs. And there used to be a time where the word COLA for a county employee truly meant something of Minnesota that you bought in the machine, because we didn't really talk about that, or we talked about why people shouldn't have a parking garage or other things. Memories are long in families that come in this county. But I, I, look, I don't want to harm our people, and it appears that this effort went that direction, and I don't want that. I will say this, and this is my point, there is nothing in our public service that is guaranteed for us based on the instability of our federal and state action right now. There's nothing guaranteed, and anyone trying to guarantee anything out of that region or what the heck our laws are going to look like or how we spend our dollars. Friends, we have money and dollars that we have lawfully gone after to, from taxpayers and taken votes here to do that, that you can't do, you can't spend, you can't do it in a certain way, and if you do do it wrong, they tell you you can't do that from the dollars you're pulling from your taxpayers to take care of your services. I don't know how we can operate like this, with one hand in the muppet and the other hand on your strings. So that said, I'm a vote to restore this today, but department heads and others, I don't know. We're going to have these legislators that come through, and they're all high-fiving and profiling, don't be high-fiving and profiling them. Tell them to fix this. Fix it now, help us fix this, and let's get on with it.
Okay. I see Counselor Hawk has her hand up, and I'll go to Counselor Hawk, and then I'll go to Counselor Iverson next.
Yes, first of all, I take responsibility for having supported this because we have discussed it over and over and over again over the years, because that's something that we had been told we needed to take a look at. I think the biggest thing, and maybe because it was so late at night, because we were like trying to really find a, a big difference, because we've been talking about postage and whatever, which is not going to fix the problem, and so I supported the motion. Here's where I think we went wrong, and I think we can all recognize that now, sometimes hindsight really teaches us a rough lesson, but we didn't get the fiscal on it, we didn't get, we didn't present it early enough on for people to tell us how it was going to affect them or anything, and, and our employees didn't even know we were going to be discussing it or voting on it. And so to that, I mean, I get it, and, and when I was hearing back from several of the long-term employees, which I think we should treat them with great deal of respect, they weren't getting the same kind of raise as the brand-new people were getting because they count on that longevity as a part of their salary. But we didn't get the fiscal, and we didn't. Same thing as when we were being presented early on, that said, what kind of a COLA do you think we might do at the first beginning of that? And we said, well, what that's going to cost? No, well, we don't know, we just think you ought to do a 3%. We didn't have a number. I mean, that's not what, not how we should operate, and, and so both of those things, decisions were made without fiscal responsibility, and that's on us because we need to make sure we get it before we make decisions. So those are two big things, and we're still sitting here on just county general alone a 4.7, $4.7 million deficit, and as a reminder, we're going from a proposed tax rate of $23 million, 900-some thousand dollars from a $17 million something for this year. So look at the jump in that tax levy, and yet we're still spent that and still not enough, and so we have to think about more than just the people in this room, because we are here to represent the people of the county who's picking up the tab, and this is going to make a big difference because, remember, that tax levy on the levy-controlled funds, because we have seen a reduction in the assessed value, it's going to take a higher rate to ra, higher tax rate to raise the levy to that amount. So while the homestead people, people who have housing is going to be getting some breaks, the people who are renting will not be getting that same break, or the others. So we have to recognize that. We have a lot of people that we are making decisions for, not just the people in this room. I think we need to put that longevity back in there because if we're going to do something like that, we better let, we better do it well in advance at the very beginning of talking about budgets, to let people know so they could kind of get the feel for it and let us know what their thoughts are. The same thing is that I'd like to know what the number is. We put it back in, what's that number? We reduce COLA, what's that number? I mean, those are fiscal questions. It's not up to us to come up with those numbers, that's to come from staff, so. But I thank you, and, and I just wanted to say that because I didn't want Kate to think, pardon me, council member Wilt, to think that I wanted to throw her under the bus because I was right there. I mean, all seven of us voted for it, so.
I'm going to make my three points quick because I'm more interested in hearing from you than my own voice. First of all, I fully support President Crossley. The letter that she read out loud today shows not only leadership, but integrity and courage. That is rare in a leader, and I am fully in support of a leader who not only acknowledges when they succeed, but also when they make a mistake. I think that's, that's very important to acknowledge. The second point that I want to make is as PAC president, I want to point out that we've been throwing a lot of changes at county employees over the past 10 months. We have not only paused PAC, making it much more difficult to come to us to find changes to the way that employees are compensated, but also now a hiring freeze and, and other things that are just making it even more difficult for all of you. To throw longevity on top of that, I fear was the straw that broke the camel's back, and, and again, I want to join the chorus of colleagues that say that as in PAC, when we've been moving with caution towards things in county government, a week ago, we moved without that caution. So I will be joining my colleagues today in, in voting to reinstate longevity. That way, we can take a longer and harder look at this in the coming year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Fidel?
So I'm the newest one here. Been at the bargaining table 10 times, so I know how back and forth works a lot. I do think that we rushed, and that wasn't fair, but I also think, from what I understand, and I'm still new, that what's coming ahead next year for the following year's expenses will be even worse. So I think it's going to be really important to really look at this and a multitude of other things. I think there won't be anything off the table this year. This year, in my opinion, has been a total state of flux. We didn't know this, we didn't know that, we didn't know what was going to occur when, and so it's just been a problem from the beginning of the legislative session, and then after it ended, we still couldn't find out things, in my opinion. So I think that I'm very interested in reaching a compromise, I have a long history of doing that, so I will not be in favor of keeping the longevity now, but we have to address it, I am convinced, next year.
Okay. All right, so thank you, colleagues, for everybody's response and feedback, and now we will go to the public. I know y'all are out there, and I know you got some comments. So as a reminder, since we have multiple people that are here, and I'm sure that are virtual as well, that would like to make comment, I will do a back and forth, so I will do two in-person and two online. Everybody will have up to three minutes to make your comment. After your three minutes are up, and those are all around here, we kindly politely ask you to take your seat, and then we'll move on to the next public commenter until we have exhausted all public comment for the evening. So if you are ready to make your public comment, again, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room, you can sign in, again, you'll have up to three minutes, and then if you have And then if you have your hand raised or you can raise your hand via Teams. If you are on Teams, please identify who you are before you make your comment. So I'm going to look first here to see if anybody would like to make comment. No? You, everybody that can make a public comment, if you're ready, please come ahead and line up. And so we'll go. Yes, yeah, there should be a sign in. She does state it that you can sign in, sign your name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Okay. And obviously, here to talk about the budget. Thank you, first of all, members of the council. It's a thankless job and I'm sorry if you got some rude comments from some people. I know if I had responded right when the vote came out, I probably would have sounded bad. So right off, I'd like to say thank you all. My name is Stuart Baggerly, longtime listener, first-time caller. And I've been, just quick background, I've been over here at the Public Defender's Office 26 years doing trial work and that was followed by three years as a deputy prosecutor in Martinsville and three years in Spencer and three years doing trial, trial work for Mr. Nunn's office. Throughout all that, I'd like to think I tried to stick up for people who weren't able to stick up for themselves. This is something where I know you have to look at the numbers. That's something you have to do that, and I would not want that job. I'm terrible with numbers. But, you know, I hope you appreciate and I think you do really, despite what some people might have said, that, you know, when you're looking at numbers down there, those aren't, those are numbers there. This out here, this isn't just numbers. This is the people that keep the county on its feet. Nothing, even the city government does, has to run, everything they do has to run through the county courthouse. And so we have, you know, all the people that, I mean, you know, the clerk's office, all the court staff, all the people that are maintaining that place. I always say it's like the maintenance people at the Justice Building, you know, it, it's like you're giving people that work on the Titanic buckets and say, go below and see what you can do. It is a tough job and everybody shows up and there's a trust component here and that we would like to think we can trust you and you would like to think you can trust us. Wasn't real thrilled about the time clock, but, you know, last time I had to punch a clock, I was in the seventh grade working at a Big Boys in Detroit and they thought I was not going to work if I wasn't there. If any of these people were not showing up and they weren't doing their jobs, we'd figure it out real quick and they'd be sent on their way. Okay, these are the people that make it work. Okay, blah, blah, let me make sure I'm not running over. And as I said, trust is something that's earned and we would like to think we've earned your trust and that you trust us to show up and do our jobs. And, you know, I, that was great to have a time clock so I could be taken back to the time I wasn't trusted at Big Boys, but I'm there every day at eight o'clock, if not a little earlier. I'm there till about five and I just barely got out of, we got a big, long sentencing hearing, took two hours to get up here so I could knock this out, however good it is. But these are the people that without, the people that work, I'm more familiar with the Justice Building, but it's also the people that plow the streets, the people that fix the potholes, all this stuff. I mean, city kicks in a little, but, you know, there's broke too. And so we understand you have to make this stretch. We're all up there, at least in the, the building, we're all working hard. The Public Defenders, we got kicked out and we now have our renovated little strip mall and the toilets quit blowing up and the roof quit leaking.
Time is up.
Oh, sorry. But anyway, I wanted to thank you for behalf of all the people that work up here at the Charlotte Zitlow Memorial Fungus Farm. We appreciate the work you're doing. And I'll sit down, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next up here in the Nat U Hill Room again, you can write in your name, state your name and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi. My name is Laura Wirt and I'm an employee of Monroe County. I was hired after the longevity option was taken off the table, so I understood that benefit would not be part of my employment package before I agreed to the position. I stand before you as a leader, a fellow employee and a voice on behalf of all employees who originally were hired with a longevity option as part of their employee benefit package and now face the very real threat of having that benefit removed. Do you know how many employees who currently work in the county and have to work a second or third job to make ends meet, especially during this economically insecure time? I was struck by the number of people that work in the Justice Building alone who are hustling multiple jobs to make ends meet. How many of these employees depend on the originally agreed upon employee benefit of longevity? How many of these employees chose to stay employed with the county with a longevity benefit in mind? The answer to all those questions, quite a few. Those who are also the employees making 30,000 to 50,000 a year and putting in 30 to, 35 to 40 hours each week and depend on longevity to make it worth their while to show up every day. For example, the clerk's office employees have people come into the office or on the phone yelling or cursing or draw, or on illicit substances on a regular basis and the county is telling them they don't deserve longevity or possibly a raise to make ends meet. Removing the longevity option feels like, like a bait and switch maneuver. Not a good tactic if you want to keep employing good people and provide consistency to the county taxpayers. Being a county council member is not an easy position. Good Lord, I would never do it in a million years. And I do not envy the tough spot all of you find yourselves in. You seven, you seven shoulder the burden and the honor of having employees look to you to treat us fairly and with a desire to understand what true value we add to this government. We see the struggle, especially with finding a $3.8 million budgeting clerical error earlier this year and well, as well as the looming Senate Enrollment Act One of 2025. However, when employees' financial security is even considered as a chopping block option, I entreat you all to humbly reconsider. The fallout from Monroe County of breaking that employee benefit agreement could be considerable, both foreseen and unforeseen. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, since we already had two here, again, if you are here in the Nat U Hill Room, please line up. I'm going to go to, somebody had their hand raised via Teams. Their name isn't identified, so if the person that still had their hand raised on Teams, you can, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have up to three minutes. Go once? All right. So is there anybody else on Teams that would like to make public comment? Again, on this item, you can raise, okay, so you have your hand raised. TSD, are we able to have this person unmute?
Yes, I gave them permission to unmute their mic.
Okay. So the person that has their hand raised with the phone number that's listed, again, you should be able to unmute yourself and again, state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes. Okay. Okay. Maybe we can come back to Teams as we get this worked out because that, we'll make sure that if anybody wants to make public comment on this item, that they definitely have an opportunity to do so. So we'll come back to Teams here in a little bit as we work out this. But again, if there's somebody else here that would like to make public comment on this item, please line up, sign in your name, state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening. Joel Parker, Chief Deputy Monroe County Sheriff's Office. A little different twist on this. I know that you spoke earlier of the communications you put out to all the agency heads and electeds about how this budget year was going to, going to look for all of us. And I, I just wanted to say that I, that we at the sheriff's office in particular, Sheriff Marte pulled his staff together and made that very clear to us that this was something that we all had to participate in to make this work. And I think even just today, we had some conversations with Kim to try to ease that a little bit. So I, I understand the effort that you guys are under and from being in this position or in this, I guess, in this profession for 42 years and I have several colleagues in the back there, we know a little bit about a thankless, what a thankless job feels like. So, and I know that you guys are in that predicament right now and it's not lost on any of us. But what I really came up here to say is that with all of the, I guess, consternation swirling, not just about this topic, but about the entire budget, that the sheriff and I spent about, oh, probably a good hour last night on the phone with President Crossley. And we discussed this issue and many others. And I just wanted to take a second to come up here and say that, that in our conversations with President Crossley, she listened very carefully to us. She understood the, the issues that we were bringing to her. She listened and she gave us the grace of her time in the evening where she didn't have to. She wasn't a council member that time. And it's not lost on me either that when, if, if the president of this council is interested enough to take the time to talk to a couple of, in, in the leadership of an agency, then that's, that speaks very well for this council and how they represent the employees of this county. I don't know what you're going to do tonight. You have a decision to make, but I, I just wanted to thank you personally because you gave us your time last night. That's what I came up here to say. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else here that would like to make public comment? All right, please. Again, if there are multiple people that'd like to make comment, you can go ahead and start lining up. And then since this is the second person, I'll go back to the person that is on via Teams. So again, state your name for the record or you have up to three minutes.
My name's Kirk Sylvester. I'll make this real quick and sweet. I've been here over 28 years. I've seen the county through the thick, I've seen it through the thin. I've seen it when we got the things given to us and I've also seen it when we've had the year, the thin years, the thick years, the good years, the bad years. You take one, you take the other. Pretty disappointed in this group of how they burden the shoulders of the employees for this, especially the ones that have been here for a long time. You had a way of phasing this out and you were phasing it out and it seemed to be going fine. So as I said, I'm going to keep it quick. I'll tell you, I'm very disappointed in your guys' decision and how you handled it and the perception that it gave across the county. And I'll say this in my closing is I hope you overturn it and the ones that you don't and the ones that vote against returning it, shame on you. Have a good night.
All right. So next up, I'm going to go back to Teams and again, ask for this person to state your name for the record and again, try to unmute yourself. TSD.
Hello.
Oh, hello. All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and then you'll have up to three minutes.
Yeah, this is Garrett Fig. I work at the Monroe County Clerk's Office. I'm also a lifelong Monroe County resident. Just like everybody else, I'm definitely saddened to hear this and it'll affect the yearly budget for us. I just think, like you all said, we have to think of a more creative way to do this other than taking it out on the county employees who do represent everybody. Like we are the county, we are part of the county and I just feel like we really do deserve to keep that money because most of us signed on with that being the plan. The sheriffs or I guess the deputies, not so much the jail, they get the 48 cents an hour, you know, per hour, per year of service, up to 20 years. And I just think that we deserve some form of longevity. I've worked here for seven years and I haven't had a step increase because I'm stuck between the three and eight-year mark. That's a pretty big gap. I could go elsewhere and make money, you know, way more money, but, you know, it's nice to have a job where you can have a pension when you leave. And, you know, I do appreciate everything that's gone into this, but I think more needs to be talked about with that $3.8 million deficit that we have because the auditors messed up. I'm not trying to blame them, but it's just, I do bookkeeping and I just don't understand how that many people could have missed that. So I really thank you guys for your time. I know it takes a lot of work to do the budgeting, so thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else via Teams that would like to speak? Please raise your hand. All right. And, yep, okay. All right. We see another hand raised again. Unmute yourself, state your name, you'll have up to three minutes. Looks like Kyle Dugger has their hand up. Kyle, if you're able to, are you able to unmute? All right. TSD, is there, can we help Kyle, please?
He has permissions to unmute. Let me try promoting him to presenter to see if that helps.
Okay.
Okay, that worked.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name's Kyle Dugger. This month, I work at the Public Defender's Office. This month is actually my 10-year anniversary with the county. The only thing that I wanted to say, just in addition to what I'm sure will be other comments about some of the like human impact or people who felt like the communication was poor, I just wanted to make sure that it was stated too, that just if you were purely looking at this from an economic perspective, the functions of the county employees that they perform on a daily basis, like the legal processes and other processes that go on in my office and other county offices are kind of complicated and they become easier with experience and with people who know, who just do them on a daily basis. And so there is, there is loss from having to retrain new people. There is economic loss from losing people to other positions and then having to have people who are not familiar with the county structures and the county processes to come in and do it. And so like employee retention has benefits beyond just compensating the employees or keeping them happy. There is also a benefit for the county to keeping in place the employee benefits that make people want to work here and remain working here. Those people are experts at what they do and losing them is a cost greater than just like their social value. And so I just wanted to make sure someone mentioned that. The other thing, someone else told me this, but I thought it was just a good perspective as well, is that there is like a little bit of inequity argument when you talk about the longevity versus COLA. If you are a high, if you were on the higher end of the spectrum of earners for a county employee, like how an attorney is, a 3% increase for COLA in your pay can be a lot more significant than if you say make 30 or 40,000 dollars a year. But the longevity, if you've worked for the county for a long time, can be, can be greater and is not based on your actual salary or percentage of your salary. And so I think that there is sort of also like a disparate impact where, for example, if longevity is stricken and we keep COLA, I will see like a, a greater increase in my pay to adjust for the cost of living than maybe like my paralegal or one of my administrative assistants who makes less than me, but because they have worked for the county for a long time and are great at their job, they, you know, could see a greater portion of their overall salary recuperated as a benefit through the longevity. And so I just wanted to point out, like those two additional things in addition to the like human impact of having, receiving less compensation for your work.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Again, if there is a public comment to which, it looks like we have one coming up. Again, state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello, council. I'm Jason Funk and I work in the auditor's office. Just to state that publicly, I am off the clock right now, just to let that be known. Bree is my boss. I work on the property side. Carly and everyone else works on the financial side, so they've been helping you guys with budget and you, you know them personally. I just wanted to comment on a few things. One is I'm very happy with my longevity. One is I'm very happy with my longevity. I snuck in right before you guys, as bored as a council, made the decision to stop or pause longevity for new hires. I'm very happy with mine. I hope you reconsider tonight or going forward as far as longevity. I understand plenty of people here in this room right now are 20 and 25-year veterans of that bonus, as I like to think of it. I would like to speak to something that's more budget-related, that I hope that the council going forward reconsiders. Abatements. I don't believe tax abatements should be granted as they are considered. This year in pay 25, in pay year 25, we are missing out on $2.1 million that we are not collecting because we are awarding those abatements. For next year, for pay 26, since we don't have the rates yet, I kind of guesstimated on my own that we were probably going to miss out. A healthy guess would have been like $1.5 million. That's just a guess because we don't have the rates yet. But for pay year 25, we are missing out on $2.1 million that we could be collecting in tax dollars for our county. Something to consider going forward. That's all I really wanted to talk about tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and as a reminder, these are, we are discussing making public comments on the actual longevity itself. All right, is there anybody else that would like to make public comment on this item? Again, please line up, sign your name and state your record, or you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is April Wilson. And although I work at the Monroe County Prosecutor's Office, I want to be clear that I'm here in my individual capacity. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about longevity tonight. I want to give you a concrete example of what Mr. Duggar was just talking about. I appreciate that as part of the longevity conversation, there was a prioritization about COLA. But I do think prioritizing COLA in this particular decision resulted in a disparate impact. And a concrete example of that is my secretary has worked for the county for about 27 years. I have, I'll be 10 years next year. Her longevity amount is greater than mine and it should be. She's approaching almost three decades. When you cut longevity, you cut both from both of us, but hers is greater than mine. So she's going to take a greater hit for that, even though she's been with the county once again for almost three decades. I make more than she does, so when you decide to increase COLA, that'll mean I get a greater increase than she does. If we're looking at that fiscally, the people who will receive the greatest amount of that 3% will be your newest employees who make, who are more higher earning income than some of our lower earning income employee positions who have been with the county and been dedicated to this community for several decades. So I appreciate that the county's under some difficult considerations. I personally would ask that you reinstate longevity and reassess the percentage of COLA because I want to make sure that those employees who've been with us, specifically people like my secretary and other support staff in our office and throughout the county, that their long years of service are honored and that the COLA is appropriately reduced to address that. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, all right. Anybody else this next up that would like to make public comment? Yeah, you can go ahead and state your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Lisa Ridge, 38 years this, this week. So I want to thank you for bringing this back to the table. Listening to a lot of the employees that have reached out to you over the last week. I know I've certainly heard from some within the department. The benefits have improved, the pay, the wages have improved at the county, as you stated earlier. I appreciate that. I know that our department appreciates that. Also, benefits have been encouraged to try and attract new employees. I think I've heard that numerous times. And I, and that's great, but consider what you have with long-term employees too and don't forget about them. And I feel like that rash decision was forgetting about what you have as long-term employees and not just trying to attract new. Implementing the phase out in 2023 was the first step. I understand the old longevity and I see it. I understand that you see it as double. But there's ways to dissolve that and with the step increases of going out to the 25 or the 30 or the 35, that gives people incentive to want to stay at the county longer. And if you would work that direction and have more communication with those employees and get some input, I think it would speak volume. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, since we had two already here in the Nat U Hill Room, I'll go back to Teams. Again, anybody on Teams that would like to make public comment on this item? Again, you can raise your hand. Okay, so not seeing a hand raised via Teams, but it looks like I see somebody lined up here. So again, sign your name, state of, or yes, sign your name, state it for the record and you have up to three minutes.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Poppy Vru. I am building commissioner here in the county. And I want to just say a couple of things. I know that my budget is frustrating for, for some of you because I have, I can't see the future. I, I'm working with some of the restrictions that the state may or may not do and I'm, I'm asking you all to allow me to be prepared for when the state may or may not do the thing it says it's going to do. And I understand that, that that can be a bit frustrating. I also want to talk about, I, I started in 2008 and I was the baby in the department for seven years. For seven years, nobody, I was the youngest tenured person in the department. And I have been blessed to work with people who spend their careers, not just in my department, but in the county. And for lack of a better way to say it, we're Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. We're here, we're here to work for the people of the community that, the longevity. I've been through this myself when longevity saved me from a bill, right? A surprise. I knew it was coming. And I've also been on the other side of that when longevity, longevity allowed me to do something special with my family, right? It's something that we tried and we worked to not count on, to save, to have it prepared, kind of like some folks do with it, with their, with their tax returns, right? We, we have, we have this coming. But the, the real, the real thing I want to say is I have been blessed to work with people who know what they're doing. I work with them daily. We, we are efficient. We, we're by no means perfect, but we're always working to be better and better and better and take, gain more understanding, go to classes again. Be, be, I can speak for my department. We want to be the best building department in the state of Indiana. It's a goal every day and longevity is a big part of that. It also makes it extremely difficult to replace folks that work in my department. There, there's not a big pool of people dying to be building inspectors, right? This isn't, this wasn't my dream as a child to be a building inspector. My dream was to live with my wife again and she said, you can do this job, right? So I, I said, yeah, I can do this job for a year and that's been almost 18 years ago now, right? I, I love the county. I love the place. I love the people here. It has been a very fulfilling career so far and I want that to remain. The one thing I want to say additionally to that is I am very grateful for the trust that you've put in me with, yes, I need some money for books. I may not spend it. I may not be able to. I may not need to. What I will commit, again, if I don't need to spend it, I won't. My predecessor was, was pretty stingy. I'm a little less stingy than he is, but I'm still pretty stingy. And I'll commit to not spending anything in that budget that I don't need to spend next year. I just really appreciate you all thinking about providing me the opportunity to respond quickly when, when I need to and providing us in Monroe County the ability to retain. I'm super biased. I'll admit it upfront, but I think you have the best building department in the state in Monroe County. And I want to, I want to maintain that and I really appreciate you all allowing us to do that. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. Next up, we'll go to, yeah.
Yep.
Good evening. I'll be brief. I'm Beth Hamlin with the Prosecutor's Office. I feel compelled to speak on behalf of our employees, our staff. I'm so proud of them. We have a lot of employees in our office that have worked for 20-plus years with the county, many of them in our office the whole time. They know, they have so much institutional knowledge and I think treating them with respect is how we maintain the workforce that we have. I think, I was privy, and I don't know if you all saw, a calculation that was done by the probation department that really showed the numbers of how you compare a 2005 salary with a projected 2006 3% COLA increase. And then if you subtract off the longevity and divide that out and show what percent raise is that, you're kicking the long-term employees in the teeth. They're getting like a 0.1%, I think was one of the people that had been there the longest in probation. I did not do these calculations, but you know, the oldest employees, not the oldest, the people that have been there the longest are getting a much reduced COLA increase. Whereas the new employees, and I love our new employees as well, but they're getting the full benefit of the 3%. You need to find another way to approach this. It's really an insult to people that have been here a long time. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, anybody else that would like to make public comment? Again, if you're here in the Nat U Hill Room, you can start lining up at the podium. But I will go back to Teams to see if there is any other takers on speaking to this item. All right, and then I'm going to go back to the Nat U Hill Room to see if there's any other, last call for public comment on this item. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so seeing no public comment via Teams or here in the Nat U Hill Room, I will go back to counsel here. I already saw Counselor Fiddles hand up and then I'll go to Counselor Henry. Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate all the feedback, whether it's been in texts, emails, calls or in person. You can't make decisions without getting information and I, as these folks know, I ask for information all the time. So, but I do want to say one thing about the longevity bonuses that seem to be the issue. And that is that I don't see them as being baked into your salary base, right? So I don't see that as a win-win. And I'm hoping that we can come up with something where it is a win-win for everybody. Where in, right now, the, the bonus, the longevity bonus is a one-time payout, which doesn't get added to your base, as I understand it. So there's no ongoing benefit from a base or a longevity, or not a longevity, but an increase, salary increase after that. So you don't take, let's say it's $1,000. Let's make it simple. So if you have a $1,000 bonus, a longevity, and it just is a check for whatever that ends up being after you take out the taxes, that $1,000 doesn't get added to your base. And then the next year, if you get a COLA, you don't get a COLA on that other $1,000 that you got as a bonus. So I see that as a deterrent. So I'm interested in finding a way where we can make it work better for everybody. That's my position.
All right, thank you. Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a motion, amendment to the main motion. I move that if council votes to reinstate longevity pay, the salary ordinance shall be simultaneously amended to reflect a 0% cost of living adjustment for 2026. That the auditor's office be directed to prepare the revised grid accordingly for adoption at our first meeting in January to ensure balanced appropriation with the understanding that this reduction is temporary and may be revisited at mid-year review should revenues exceed current projections.
Can you just read it again? It's pretty long.
I move, yeah, I know. Yeah, I move that if council votes to reinstate longevity pay, the salary ordinance shall be simultaneously amended to reflect a 0% cost of living adjustment for 26, 2026. That the auditor's office be directed to prepare the revised grid accordingly for adoption at our first meeting in January of 2026 to ensure balanced appropriations with the understanding that this reduction is temporary and may be revisited at mid-year review should revenues exceed current projections.
If no one else cares to second that, I will. And I.
So, okay, so hold on, just one second. Yeah, so there is a motion in a second and I just kind of want to go back to discussion because I want to give Mr. Henry an opportunity to explain that in detail, his ration for his amendment, and then we can go to council questions for that.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. It's very simple. As I said at the onset, we need to find offsets in the budget. And so if we are going to bring back longevity, it needs to come from somewhere. I'm starting with a pause on the COLA. And again, with the caveat that we need to understand our reversions for the year. We need to understand what's coming in revenue next year. It is not a no, but not yet on COLA if we're going to bring back longevity. So if, if we do vote yes on longevity, this amendment triggers to a 0% COLA and so we can understand our reversions and budget and revenue for next year. That's, that's the goal here.
Okay, Counselor Hall.
Yes, what I wanted to add to that, first of all, we're going to get another report supposedly on October 12 regarding our income tax, to see if there's any updates to that. But I think it's really important to see what that pause in hiring is going to represent as far as what we might be able to do for COLA. Because rather than looking at something rather dire down the rate, if, if we can do it through attrition, through a reduction of hiring new folks, that might help us get through to the end. And we've heard tonight that they really, what I was hearing, they are more interested in keeping their longevity and especially talking about their employees than they are the COLA. And from the email I received, that's the sort of thing I was getting as well. So it's another thing where we just, we need to take a pause, look at where our revenue is, see where we are. And we can always adjust next year.
All right, yes, Counselor Ibsen.
I appreciate the thought behind this motion, but I'll be voting against it for two reasons. Number one, we are having a lengthy conversation right now about rash action and I believe that triggering an immediate elimination of COLA will have similar consequences to the vote that we took last week. Second of all, I think that taking action or approving this amendment also is somewhat tone deaf in that we just heard from you, our county employees, about how important COLA is as it pertains to longevity as over, as keeping employees in positions that have a length of service. So while I appreciate the counselor's thoughtfulness with the amendment, I will be voting against it.
All right, thank you. Looking over, yes, Counselor Decker.
Yeah, my concern with the amendment is that it will take tonight's issue that we've had since the last week and it will administer steroids to that problem. And I say that with all due respect. I could write these emails that will come in tomorrow. The word COLA will magically go out of everything we heard tonight and it'll come in strong tomorrow. And I'm, while I think there's an intention and, and yes, there are things with budgeting that are always ongoing. The reality is you're, we get done with this budget, you're on to the next one and you're always adjusting, nipping, tucking, I mean, it never stops. But on salaries, that is a different story. You are dealing with the heart, soul and mind of it. We've heard that a little bit tonight. And I think some of the phasing that we had talked about with longevity for employees that were not yet here was seen in a different way, obviously, right? For those who are, and it's not rocket science. So I often say to my students, it's not right, it's not wrong, it's just the way life is. And I'm concerned that this is going to do that. And I think that for, for a moment, I think folks on this side of a thing that are elected officials in every level, it's time to just start calming things down and gently moving towards solutions. And I think we'll still get there with that kind of adjusting and I think there's more to hear yet tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else that'd like to make a comment on this? Count.
So I'll take a point of privilege in that. Again, I definitely appreciate the amendment. I'm not in favor of it because of the simple fact that we will do what we did last week to our long-term employees, to our short-term employees, in terms of if they're thinking that they're gonna get this COLA, we're gonna take that away from them. And so again, we have identified that there is an issue, an equitable issue. And I know that, I think that we can all agree, all seven of us can agree that there is an equitable issue when it comes to longevity. So I would like to see us reinstate longevity and move on with the notion that we will work to have alternative solutions, such as the step increases, as we've heard many times tonight. So I would, I would like to do that first. I also would like to get through the rest of the agenda because I do think that we have ways and means to reducing our deficit here this evening without having to take away from COLA. So I'm a no on this amendment. Yes.
Thank you. And I'll just conclude. I appreciate the comments of my colleagues. Understand that this doesn't give me any joy, but it comes back to what I said at the front end, which is I'm trying to preserve the employees we have so we do not face in the subsequent years reduction in force, as our neighbor governments have had to do. And one of the challenges we have is, and I, you know, put a pin on it because I think we'll be back here in a few hours, is we can continue to cut and move things around to the edit, to the jail corrections lit, to any other place. But what we're saying when we can't see clearly how to find a solution to a balanced budget is we're going to be adopting a deficit budget. And I guess we're gonna find out what our risk tolerance is for that to join our colleagues in other governments around the county and state. I also think it's worth saying, and I think it has to be said, this isn't about scoring political points. Sometimes you have to make the harder correct choice over an easier wrong one. And I'm not here to try to get campaign talking points in 2026. I know many of us are gonna be on the ballot. But it's about doing the right thing right now. And the right thing right now is getting a balanced budget, protecting our workforce to preserve the, preserve the perf, to preserve the self-insurance and the amount of money that we're providing to make sure our employees are healthy and to make sure that the other benefits are preserved. And so if we're gonna bring back longevity, and if we're gonna try to figure out how to phase that or build out a better step program in future years, that is a, that sounds like a promise of the council to the workforce. But understand that this gives me no joy. I'm trying to keep people employed here. And as to the Prosecutor's President's point earlier, we've seen a 14% increase over two years in COLA, 8.5 and 3.2. And so to add another 3% to that would put us in a leading market in the community when we've seen other governments lay people off as a result of the cuts from Indianapolis. So understand this is coming from a place of trying to do the harder right choice tonight to try to get us to a place to balance a budget, to preserve the workforce. And that's the spirit of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else that would like to make final comment? Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
Yes, so, um, in this, I appreciate the spirit of, of this amendment. But I, and I still, I mean, I, I get that, that we can't make everybody happy. And I've heard a lot of the comments. What stands out to me from the comments, and I appreciate you all taking the time, I really do, the couple of things that really stood out to me were get more input from employees. And we need to find a different way to approach how we're doing this. And those, that speaks to maybe working with you all a little bit more. And, and I would like to commit to doing that. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do this amendment. And weirdly, it's because I do, I voted last week to reduce COLA as well. I mean, I, I wanna re, I want to balance the budget. And I wanna do it in a sustainable way. And I don't see us getting there, and that's very frustrating. But this isn't, this isn't the way I wanna do it. I wanna respect what I heard some of y'all say today.
All right. Last call. All right. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Please, please.
Oh, I didn't know, did you have, I'm sorry.
No, I just want them to read the motion back to us.
Oh, yeah. And I was just gonna do that. So this is a vote. No, I have it here, but the caveat is that if the longevity is approved to put back into the, so that kinda thing. So if longevity is approved to be reinstated into the budget, COLA is then zeroed to the 2025 rates. And that amended salary ordinance will be then prepared for January, at the beginning of January of 2026. And to say that this reduction is going to be temporary and will be looked at again once there is a review of what the state and the revenues are gonna bring in. Yeah, that's okay. Okay?
Yes. Counselor Decker.
Can you, what?
No.
Counselor Fidal?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
No.
Counselor Crossley?
No.
Counselor Hawke? Counselor Wiltz?
No.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion fails, 5-2. 2-5.
Okay. Okay. So that amendment to the overall, which is to reinstate, just to be clear, to reinstate longevity failed. So now we go back to our bigger topic at hand, which was the original motion that Counselor Iverson made earlier. All right. And so may we please have a roll call vote?
Please read that to us.
That motion is to reinstate the longevity with the benefit part across all of the funds.
Counselor Wiltz.
No.
Counselor Henry?
No.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-2.
Okay. So just to be clear for everybody, the motion to reinstate longevity has passed for 2026. So again, thank you all for all of the comments that we've received today in person.
Still reading.
And, yeah, that's it. Thank you. And we got work to do. So again, this is a notice that there will be work to do starting early of next year. Thank you. All right. Next up is item number five, which is the continued 2026 budget reviews. So looking over here, does anybody have any?
Garrett big.
Is now exiting.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi. All right. Just, that was random. Does anybody have any motions that they would like to make regarding 2026 budgets? Yes, oh, sorry. Yes. Counselor Iverson.
Counsel, I would like to open the following budgets and make the following amendments. In Fund 1,000 County General, reduce account line 18001-0309 self-insurance to $5,185,750. And in Fund 1,000 County General, fund 1107 Aviation, fund 1215 Election, and fund 1224, and fund 1224 Reassessment, reduce all supply lines to zero. In Fund 1,000 County General, reduce account line 3006-0380 Medical to zero. In Fund 1,000 County General, reduce all account lines 30028, which are Training and Travel, to zero. Simultaneously, create in Fund 1112 Economic Development Lit account line 18001 Self-Inurance, and set that line to $2 million. Create in Fund 1112 Economic Development Lit, all needed supply lines from Funds 1,000, 1107, 1215, and 1224, and set those account lines accordingly for a grand total of $1,510,257. Create in Fund 1112 Economic Development Lit account line 34100 Medical Services, and set that line at $1,675,277. Create in Fund 1112 Economic Development Lit, all Training and Travel lines from Funds 11,000, and set those account lines accordingly for a grand total of $157,462. This is for a grand total economic development lit budget
Second.
All right. And I'm gonna look to Ms. Kim Sheldon to speak on this.
Yes. Counselor Iverson and Counselor Crossley and I worked on a proposal to move certain funds, or amounts from the general fund in, with regards to self-insurance. So I have it on the screen as to what the proposals are. There's also, counselor members, you have that in front of you so that you can see it better on a piece of paper there. So what we're proposing is, in the personnel category, moving $2 million out of general fund for that self-insurance. So that's gonna reduce that. Within the levy funds only of general, aviation, reassessment, and election, general fund would, would be the, all of their supply lines. And this is all of the supply lines for the general, the aviation, reassessment, and election. And you can see those amounts there on the screen. We also then spoke about moving in the services. What we, could we move easily? And that would be the medical service line that's in the jail budget and moving that, as well as all Training and Travel lines within the general fund only. And so that would bring us to a reduction across those levy funds of $5,342,996.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Iverson, and I'll go to Counsel Hawke.
So first of all, this is a big number, $5,342,996. This is exactly the direction I think we need to be headed, and this was not my idea. We, a lot of credit goes to the Auditor's Office, Breon Gregory and Carly Woodruff, for suggesting not just these items, but a plethora of items that we're gonna be talking about in our budget because we need solutions. I also want to thank Counselor Member David Henry for his push to consider this particular budget. I was very vocal against doing this. And I think that the times are now to the point where we need to be considering this. I will also note that this does not mean that there's any reduction in supplies, services, or personnel lines in county government. Rather, we are using our lit to be able to afford those. And that helps us reduce, if not eliminate, that $4.7 million deficit in the general fund 4B. If it does not completely eliminate that, then it comes very close. And I, I think that this type of collaboration, this type of thinking about solutions has gotten us to this point. And I, I'm pretty happy with where we landed here. But we do have, you know, other things to do on the agenda, so this isn't the end-all, be-all.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Hawke.
Yes. If we've talked about, we're gonna do things and didn't know about it in advance, well, thank you, this is one of them. Did anyone speak with the Sheriff's Department about medical services being moved to this fund? Is that a big chunk, $1,675? Did you discuss this and with?
The answer is no.
Well, what you'll see later as movement of dollars from the jail expenses over to the jail bu, to the jail lit budget was discussed in detail so that, you know, it's not a surprise to the department head and those who are responsible for making sure the dollars are available. But more, I have that as a concern. And I also am very disappointed that you're not covering anything to cover whether or not we're gonna have dollars for paving for next year. I mean, I think it's incumbent on us to remember that the public expects their potholes to be filled. And, you know, they're all waiting for something to happen in their neighborhood where they haven't had a, a street repaved for a very long time. And because the revenue has dropped so far for the highway department because it is not tied to property tax, it is tied to the gas tax and wheel tax and so forth. So their revenue is dropping, and yet the expenses of trying to maintain these roads are going up. And so we took expenses out of, out of general that the highway had tried to put in general. And we said, no, no, take it back to highway. And they did. But where's the money to ma, for a community crossing grant? And are we really going to say, when we, and somebody made a huge mistake of saying there's no more community crossing. Where'd that come from? Of course there is. Who's watching the legislation? We all know there is. The rules about how you're going to get it has changed. And you can bet your bottom dollar that Lisa Ridge is going to be knowing how to make this work, if it's possible to do it at all. But she can't go do that if we don't put some funds in place to assist her. And why would we turn our back on what we can get to assist county government? So I'm disappointed that's not in there because that's a one-time kind of thing. That's what this is supposed to be. That's what I heard Counselor Member Wiltz saying. Let's put anything in there that is a one-time thing. These things are not one-time. Who, were they not listening? This is not one-time. This is going absolutely against what our financial advisors have told us to do. And so I'm looking for the one-time things that we can move over. I also look to, in, in the jail, the things that we can move from the jail over to the jail lit. That's staying within the same spending, funding. But this is way off, folks. And it's, you're only kidding yourself if you think you're reducing the deficit. No, you're just putting it someplace else.
Okay. Myself, Iverson, Counselor Iverson, and Michelle worked for almost two hours on this. So sorry, not sorry, for trying to figure out a way to decrease our deficit. We also wanna be mindful and know that lit rates will be resetting here in the next couple of years. So we are trying to do all that we can with this. Lastly, we all knew that this is just something that, again, myself, Counselor Iverson, along with the help of Michelle, worked on. So if anybody had any other type of suggestions, we are all duly elected. We're all seven individuals with unique perspectives. And I highly emphasize unique. We all can make amendments. Or actually, what we talked about last week is, everybody do your homework and come up with some other plans. So I guess I'm waiting to hear from other council members. This is one part of the plan. If folks don't like this, that's great. That's what democracy looks like. You can say that you don't like it. And you can vote yes, or you can vote no. That's up to whatever, how you choose to do so. But this is just something that we worked on. And I'm looking to other colleagues. If you don't like this, then we are in for a long night like we were last week. If you don't like this, then we are in for a long night like we were last week and some other weeks before. Let's make this happen. So when we get to the 14th, which is six days from now, we can come in and vote on a final adoption. And that's, like Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that. So I'm going to look over here to my left to see if anybody else has any questions or comments on this. Yes, Councilwoman Willis.
I have a question, so I hope it's not all you have to say. Because you mentioned in the, kind of, the list of what you were considering doing and putting this together, the tax rates resetting. And can you, or anyone, explain a little bit to me how the resetting of income tax rates, I believe is what we're talking about here, influences what we're budgeting into the lit? As a, you know, is that a fair question? Does that make sense?
I'm happy to address, if I may. Certain lits, as we've been discussing throughout this budgeting process, are going to be sunsetting, and then new lit takes over beginning 2028. So we need to review the new lit options and then set rates prior to 2028. We'll have to follow the timeline, of course. So I believe everything will be going away, other than our lit special purpose. So I think that's what we're talking about when we say, you know, that the entire lit is changing. So we're going from property tax levy support to more local income tax-based support for county government.
So is the logic then that rather than looking at this lit as somewhat held sacred for certain expenses, but, you know, we recognize we're in hard times, so we'll scoop out some one-time expenses to help us right now? The logic then becomes that since we're moving to a more income tax-based approach to all of county budgeting, that that justifies putting these recurring expenses into the lit because that's what we're going to be doing anyway? Is that the idea?
No, I hear what you're saying, and we were asked to assist with finding expenditures that could be easily, like, larger expenditures that could be easily moved to edit. There's not a lot of one-time expenses in county government.
Right.
Not a lot of expenditures anyway outside of bonds, like capital expenditures. So although I don't... Something needs to occur here. We need to use other sources of revenue, and unless we're talking new revenue, which nobody wants to increase taxes, I'm not sure where else to direct you. This isn't something I think we should do, or do I want to do, but I don't know what else to do.
So, okay. Okay. So that... May I continue?
Yeah.
Thank you. So that brings me back to the idea that it's still way preferable. I mean, this is, this would solve a lot. This, I really do appreciate the time, the effort, and the addition, because these are good numbers to look at and feel good about. Okay, you know, that, I could, we could say yes to this and leave the room and be like, phew, you know, we're good for a little bit. And maybe that's, maybe that's an approach to think about because it buys us some time in that respect. But I do have to say that it's also taking the easier way out because it isn't actually reducing our deficit. We're still budgeting over what our revenue is. We're just digging into our pile to pay for it, you know? And so we're still passing a deficit budget. We just have found a cookie jar. And maybe that's, that's what we're doing. I mean, I just, I feel very uncomfortable, but I need to think about this because really I, I look at, I look at the cookie jar as more of a one-time expense thing. The more we start putting things there, it's just buying time, but spending down the savings that we have that we might, well, that we've said we need for a pretty big project, that is the Justice Center. A bituminous thing is a one-time purchase. I could even justify supplies as one-time purchases, and if someone wanted to talk me into it, I could say, okay, if there's a contract that's just one year... I mean, I can, I could start talking myself into this because it's very attractive, but I just want to make sure that we all know what we're doing. And I'm not saying that you haven't thought it through. It's just I need to, I'm an external processor. You might know this about me.
We do. We love it.
Anyway, that's all I've got right now. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Decker.
Thank you very much, and I very much always appreciate that you are an external processor because a lot of times you ask the questions that help me get to thinking these things through even clearer, even when I think I know what I know. One thing I'll say about this, none of this is an ideal process because we've not been given one yet. I mean, we say that every year, but this year is the, everybody got drunk in Indianapolis, reversed thing, stood on its head and said, "Let's see what happens next." One of the questions earlier was, is the logic behind these changes meant to do this or that, or what? Friends, I don't know that there was a logic other than we're going to give property tax cuts to people, and to hell with the rest. And I do know that part of the bill, if I understand it right, and I'm not sure that many people do, but I think part of the bill said, "Here's what will happen. Property taxes will go down, and eventually, we will allow localities to begin to enact things like this." This Economic Development Lit will allow them to do that so they can take tough votes on getting dollars from, as Councilor Hawk said earlier, renters and other folks like that. I think that that was the philosophy. I think some counties have something like this, some do not, some are figuring all this out for the first time. But I don't think there was a lot of thought to, how do you make sure people have longevity? If that is, I don't know that the state truly values that. How do you make sure that you pay for benefits for folks? How do you make sure Squad Card gets to where it needs to get 10 o'clock tonight? I don't think they thought about anything of that. Because frankly, folks, voters who want property taxes to go down, that's a louder chorus than all the people that say, "I want somebody to come there at 10 o'clock." It won out. Now, the reality is, we do have this pot right now, and I read kind of some notes from FSG earlier, and they're sort of saying, "Well, things are kind of like that," but then they're kind of, I was alluding to this earlier, "But you don't want to do that, but don't rob Peter to pay for Paul." Pardon me, Peter, that's your motion. They were all over the place, but they basically were essentially saying in a very well-paid way, "We don't really know what's going on ourselves, but we've heard some speculation. We've heard that legislator talk all the time. If one does this and does this, but if not, we're by in a closed-door hearing." The reality is, this lets us do what we always do, Madam President, fudge along for a second, figuring it out, adjusting as we go, and getting to a point. Part of the thing that helped me vote a yes on putting that longevity in there is us looking at this and saying, "Hey, look, we've got to be reasonable about where we are. I'd love to do all the things that I imagined we would do one year ago today, but the world keeps tilting. And as my grandfather always said, 'There's only so long you can keep picking what you get to put on that dinner table.'" Eventually, you've got to go put something on it. This, to me, gets us through some of those things until we figure out other things down the road. I also don't see this as, I don't fully buy that this is a deficit budget. It is if you take the old property tax-only kind of, kind of thought process. The reason I say that is, these are yet again dollars that have been collected legally under the amounts that are under all those buckets, and Ms. Turner King kind of read those amounts, and basically, they have like this for this, for this, for this, and basically all of the things that a county may have to do. They just happen to give it the title Economic Development Lit because, again, things don't always have to make sense. I think this lets us fudge along. It lets us retain the workforce. It lets us retain the certain things where there are. We will have to continue to do the hard things that we're doing, but this is dollars that you have to do the things that you need to do. And I, we can't continue, and then I'll be quiet. We cannot continue to say, and I've lost the minimum fund balance discussion, I know that, I won't bring it up, but we can't continue to say this. We've got to have a minimum, and you've got to have a rainy day fund, and you've got an Economic Development Lit you can't touch, and you've got food and beverage. You can't, you can't keep going and saying, "We've got all this stuff," and then we collapse under it, when in reality, the city isn't a budget that is in deficit right now. Two rainy day funds in a row. Now, I don't know that they can keep doing that, but that's their job, not mine. The federal government, they're not working right now. They're seven days, and they're on deficit for many moons, many moons. We're not. So we've got to keep going. We've got to keep going, and I think this keeps us going. Sorry to be so dramatic, but it is a dramatic thing.
Thank you. Council Iverson.
All right, just a couple of things, and to the external processors out there, I love this conversation. I think this is a super healthy conversation. We do need to know what we're doing, and maybe what we learned from longevity conversation is maybe we need to draw, draw these conversations out a little bit more. Maybe it's important to have external processors elected to county council so that we don't just rush things through. I understand that the auditor is saying this is not the preferred route, right? But we're up against the time clock. In six days, we are adopting this budget, and we had a marathon session the other night where no reasonable solution got us anywhere close to $4.7 million. This is that, we're not even supposed to be meeting tonight. This is an extra meeting. This is the ninth hour. We have to do something. I understand it's not perfect, but we have to do something. I will also say, I really wanted to put capital lines in here because those one-term, the one-time expenses are important, but in a previous meeting, we already moved capital lines over to the general obligation bonds. Like, we dealt with those one-time expenditures already, so we are up against kind of these, these numbers in here. Now, to Council Hawk's point on bituminous, we advertised a maximum of $2 million in each line. We could put some bituminous in here. It is possible. So that's, that's more fodder for conversation this evening.
Yes, Councilwoman Willis.
Question to that point. Bituminous would be supplies?
Yes.
So it looks like that would be $490,000-ish, maybe not quite, $489,000-ish?
$743.
Yep, there we go. Math genius.
No.
In the past, when we've done these 1 million sticks in my mind, is that the need every year? And I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Is that okay?
Yes. Ms. Ridge?
Snap the information. So the call for October is a $1 million match. Community crossings will change. It's not going away. In 2027, it'll change to a distribution. We kind of have an estimate of what Monroe County will get at that point, so we won't be in that year available for community crossing because we'll be over the cap of 1 million. So it is changing its process, but right now, it is still the $1 million match, but it's very competitive. That's why we threw it in as bituminous. So if we don't get the award, we can still use that for paving. We're not tied to a match. But we are submitting by the end of the month for that, for the grant.
To be awarded next year.
It'll be awarded in December.
Oh, okay. All right.
Did you have another question? Yes, Councilor Hawk.
And yes, to be clear, if I understood correctly in our conversation, if we don't put something in here for the match, then it'll have to come out of whatever funds they have, which is just reducing how much they have to go fill the pothole.
Right.
Am I saying that correctly? So if we really want to make sure we're taking care of the roads the best we can, then we, and we want to not turn our backs on getting the community crossing if we can, we need to put something in there. However, there's a lot in there that I'm not going to support because what that just means is that we didn't want to go in and do the work of reducing expenses, and that was our requirement at the beginning. If we are spending more than you're bringing in, I've heard from how many, we have to learn to live within our means. Well, we either are or we're not.
All right. Thanks. Yes, Councilor Decker.
Can I get some help here? And, Madam President, I'd like to ask Ms. Ridge, if we were to put a line in here to reflect the bituminous amount, what amount would we need to add to this lit budget? You might need to say that there just for the public watching us.
I think I sent you an email with all the figures, and without the 1 million that you've provided in the past, it takes our paving program, or what we can budget at 1.9. If we have to use that 1 million, if we get the award, then that leaves us $900,000 for the remainder of the year to do pothole patching, preventive maintenance, and any other little bit of paving. So if you put the million in there and we get the grant, we'll use it for that. If we don't get the grant, we'll use it for paving.
Counsel, that'd be under supplies, is that right?
We can't do more than 2 million.
Yeah, so we've maxed out. That's why there's that cell on the screen for the remainder, which is the 400,000.
Ah, yeah. So you can raise the supplies from this to 2 million?
I suggest we reduce some of that other line so we can make sure we've got enough money to fix the roads. Take it from someplace else.
Counsel, let me take a stab at it here. We're running in the dark. Counsel, I move that we add to the supplies category under the levy funds a line for bituminous, and the amount...
$8973?
489, 473. 7, pardon me, 489, 743.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second? Yes, Council Iverson?
I'm going to support this amendment. I know it's not the nice round million dollars, but it gets us closer to that number. And earlier, Council Henry made a statement that you could say that we are a medical and corrections business, or whatever he said. Leaves out paving and highway. This, it, we, what you're seeing on the screen is the embodiment of how difficult this job is. We, do we cut medical services for our inmates to pay for the roads or not? And that's, that's a really tricky, tricky thing that we're having to consider right now. And, and on the back of all of that is, if we don't do something tonight, that we're going to be put in a position where potentially bigger changes are going to have to be made. This amendment is, once again, a really nice compromise from Councilmember Decker.
Councilor Hawk?
Had anybody sent this out? I mean, if it went out earlier until 10 months ago, I must have missed it.
10 months ago.
So what I'm hearing of the total, and right now, this, we're just discussing the amendment to add the bituminous on, which I certainly support just that, not going to support the rest of it. So I can vote yes for the amendment and no at the rest of it. I'd want that a separate discussion, but did, and so I ask, at the $1,675,277, was there a discussion with our Sheriff's Department? I want that a separate discussion. But did, and so I ask, at the 1,675,277, was there a discussion with our sheriff's department? And I thought I was hearing no.
Yeah.
And so was there any concern about moving that over to the jail lit because that's still within the same? Or would they say, "No, do not even consider that"? I mean, I don't know, because this all happened behind their back, and that's not fair.
Okay, so since we want to keep, and interjecting the sheriff's name, I'm going to allow the sheriff. I know Ms. Schell came over and spoke with him and Chief Deputy Parker. So since you are being called to the carpet, sir, can you please come to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room and explain your thoughts on this? But I am, so I want to have him say aye.
We're, we're willing to work with the council. For us, as long as the actual residents in that facility get the medical care that they need, I'm not going to stand in the way. I mean, we'll, we'll work with you. That's fine with us.
Okay, so.
Yeah, the only thing I was getting with the sheriff says that, just so everybody is absolutely clear on what that 1.6 is, and some change there, that is the contract for the medical care for the residents of our facility. So, I mean, it's a constitutional obligation. So I think everybody knows what that means. So all I'm saying, and I think I'll reiterate what the sheriff's saying, that if, if this helps us in this pinch here, and as long as we can maintain that amount and still service the people that do desperately need that care, I, I, I'm in agreement with the sheriff.
Okay, but the question is, because this is put in the economic development fund, whereas we could move it to the jail lit where we're moving some other positions. And that's all going to be inside the 1.2 come 2028 anyway. So it would make a lot more sense because what they're trying to do here is like one-time things. And this medical is not a one-time thing. You're always going to have this for an expense of the jail. So it seems to me that we take that, we put that over in the jail lit along with the additional employees that we put there, would make a lot more sense. But I would have rather had an opportunity to discuss this with you. As an aside, when we look at the budgets, I feel like you're being put on the spot. I can't support it being in here because this is just, if it's, if it moves from a jail expense over to a jail fund, then we're keeping the same like things in the same ballpark. But if we move it to the economic development, where it's getting mixed in with aviation and training and travel, whatever, it's just, it just doesn't feel good.
I don't disagree with your point here. Here's what I'm saying. We talked a little bit here about trusting each other here, and that was mentioned early on. This is the council's business. The sheriff's business is taking care of our employees and our inmates. So as long as we're able to do that in whatever fits the benefit of the council's dilemma here and the county's budget, as it relates to this particular issue, I, I, I think we're in agreement with whatever we need to do.
I fully understand what you're saying, and we didn't know. I have to be upfront. That's the first we heard of it. But we've always been in the mindset, if we can help, we will, as long as it's not taken away from the actual medical care that we constantly, we, we are obligated by statute to provide. So as long as the council understands that, if we can help, we will.
And I'll, again.
But I understand what she's saying.
No, and I, I get it.
We didn't know.
And I, and again, as I said earlier this evening when we started the meeting with longevity, my bad. I will take that, and we've had the conversations that we need to make sure we communicate. So to be clear, again, I think, like, we're not trying to eliminate anything because we know that is a critical thing that you all are needing. I think it was just more of trying to move missing pieces around, or like move pieces around. That, that was, it was no ill will, malicious intent, anything at all. We're still making sure that folks that are incarcerated are still getting the care, and we're just simply just doing what we can.
We didn't take it like that?
Of course, I did.
This council is under tremendous stress and pressure right now, so I understand it. Believe me, I understand the stress that you guys are going through and the pressure that you're facing. So I sympathize with you. So I've, again, if we can help, we will. You fully understand that we have to provide that care by statute, so you understand that. I understand what Marty is saying here, so, but we're all good. Fair enough?
Yes, thank you. Counsel Wilt.
We have, we have a motion that's specifically about a bituminous line. Could we?
Yep.
Because then I do have a question about other stuff.
So, yes. All right, so can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, this is a, a motion on the amendment to add bituminous line to the supplies in the edit, economic development edit at the amount of 489,743.
Yes.
Counsel Irvinson?
Yes.
Counsel Wilt?
Yes.
Counsel Decker?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Fidel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, big, big pardon. Counsel Hawk?
Well, you don't forget me.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, so that, again, to be clear, that is the amendment that Counselor Decker put forth to add bituminous to the supplies category and this. So now we come back to the overall.
I have another amendment.
Okay.
And I don't have the numbers in front of me since I wasn't given this. But I move that we remove the medical contract from the economic development fund and move it to
Another amendment?
the jail lit fund. Now, that's, that's, doesn't mean that's going to be able to stay there forever, but this is not a one-time expense. That expense for that medical contract is there forever. And it's keeping like expenses in the same.
I will second, I will second the amendment.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on this. Counsel Hawk, would you like to add more to what you've already so eloquently explained?
I, well, I wanted to hear from the sheriff. And they said they had no problem with it, so I think, is that Jordan back there? He works on those funds, so I'm sorry. I mean, as long as there's no objection, one, two, three, you had your chance, then I really would like to see that be moved over into a like fund, and we continue to know exactly what it's costing us to maintain and take care of our jail budget.
I'm going to go down the line here, so Counsel Irvinson.
I, so I'm not fully, I don't have the numbers in front of me for the correctional lit fund. I know that there are already some positions that are inside of that fund. I'm doing, I'm working on this from memory. And that because those positions are in the lit, and we didn't fully max out that rate, that, all right, so. No, 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 it's, it's okay, it's okay. That's where this fund is currently sitting right now. It's got the transitional positions in it.
No, it is currently in the general fund, the jail.
Uh huh.
So it would be moved to Fund 1233 per Counselor Hawk's motion, 1233, which is correctional lit.
And tell us the balance in that fund, please.
All right. So I'm going to go to the auditor, and then, I don't know if Counsel Irvinson was finished.
I want to follow up, yeah.
So I'll go to the auditor, and then I'm going to take it back to Counsel Irvinson so he can finish.
Would you like to see the 4B?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, can you zoom? Thank you.
Okay, so. Over here adopted.
As the 4B stands right now, we're ending 2026 with around 4.3 million. So if you make any changes, obviously, any expenses into that fund would decrease the balance shown here.
Right. Okay. And, 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 hold on, hold on, it's my time. So in Fund 1233 that we have, that we're, the amendment is referring to, we do have those six correction officers in that fund currently for the 2026 budget.
Correct.
Okay. All right, Madam President, I yield, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to go down the line here. Counselor Deckard.
One thing I, I just want to say is, I appreciate everybody trying to figure this out. I keep hearing phrases up here about one time and two times, and philosophies behind how all this goes. And I get it, those, those were the rules back in the day. But the state has taken the rules, has put them in a bag, forgot how to tie the bag up, then tied the bag up different ways, staples, shook it around, and threw it around. And it's all, the rule, whatever the rules, whatever it was, whatever, that is all changing. And that is literally what localities are doing. And again, I go back to my previous point where you got revenue, you go with revenue. But we are operating in, everything is with those rules, not to go back to that, is going to get thrown up in the air, and every local county council is going to set it. And how do I know, set those lit rates? And how do I know it? Because every township trustee that wants to call me has called me to say, "It's good to hear, see you, Trent, but don't forget, fire departments are going to depend upon that. Everything's going to depend on that because county councils will be adjusting and setting it." So everything is in a fudge period. And I don't know that the legislature intended that. But again, I'm not sure there was a philosophy other than "We're cutting property taxes, and okay, that's about it." And so we're, everything is in that wedge period, including the, everything in here. So the sacred cows of what once was done or not done is sort of jump ball. And again, we are, we've thought about, a lot about our folks. We love our folks and value our folks. And we're figuring out how to preserve our folks and services. And I do appreciate the question of the sheriff, but ultimately, we're trying to figure out how to get food in everybody's mouth, plus all the things they need as far as the services. And we're just going to have to do that for a minute till it gets clear.
Counsel Wilt. I think I have two questions. The first one is for this table and maybe Mr. Roddick. I want to make sure that this type of contract falls under the appropriate uses of the correctional lit. Okay.
First I'm hearing about this.
It's a big question. It's an important question.
Finish, please.
And then the second question, so the answer to that is, we don't know for sure. Likely is, based on like what I recall, but I just, you know, it's worth bringing up. The second question, probably to the auditor, is what was advertised? Was it 2 million in each category for this one as well? And I think I've got a paper here with the proposed changes that we haven't talked about through yet. This doesn't impact that because that's all personnel. Is that correct? I lost her. Yeah, I know, but I don't want to, I just want to make sure that we're not going over any of those limits. So is, I mean, if that's, if you all think so, then I'm good with it. It's fine. I don't know what's.
We advertised 2 million per category in addition to what was budgeted. So in the lit correctional, there would be enough room to move around what you guys are looking at.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
Anybody else have any thoughts, questions, comments, or concerns? All right. As we watch the peanut gallery.
I apologize.
We'll just wait.
Okay, so what I want to reiterate is you guys have not voted to put this into edit. Okay. Counselor Hawk has asked that instead of the medical services, which is currently in the general fund, be moved to correctional lit. So I just think that there needs to be a clarification of that motion because she didn't have the numbers. So the motion should be that account line 341, 34100, medical services in the general fund jail be zero. And then it's moved to Fund 1233 correctional lit in the amount of 1,675,277.
And it's removed from this motion that's on the floor?
Correct, because it's going to supersede what she's doing.
And if you look at the 4B and you look at what the revenue is, because we had increased the rate, the revenue is, is substantial for the correctional lit. And the, right now, as it stands right now, before making any changes, the expenses, that was like 500-some dollars. And last we looked, I think the, the balance was 7 million. Is that right? And indeed, correctional lit is for jail and jail expenses only. So you can't move highway over to the jail. But we could move jail over to the jail and free up the money so that we can actually support the highway of not just the 400-some thousand, but for the million for the bituminous. That's why I was trying to get it out before that move, but anyway.
Yes, Counsel Irvinson?
As I understand it, however, the bituminous line is a supply. So if we move medical services out of edit, that doesn't help us increase bituminous because medical services is a services line. I'm also really nervous that the question asked of legal was, "Can we have guidance on this?" And, and the answer was, "I just don't know yet." So I think at this point, without that guidance, and being a little gun-shy of unintended consequences, I, I don't think I could support this amendment.
Legal Department, please look up the legislation of the correctional lit. Look it up.
Okay.
He, he's going to have to step away and, and call someone.
So I'm going to do this as we figure this out, and this feels like a really bad telling of Ayla right now. I am going to recess for 10 minutes to see if we can get clarification. So it is 7:13, so I'm going to recess for 10 minutes. All right, so we are back. Listened to some Linkin Park during our break, and I'm locked and loaded and ready to go. So as the cliffhanger, as we left everybody before we took our break, we were going to check to see if the, the medical contract for the jail is something that we can use for lit. So I'm going to look at Justin to see what he says, survey says.
I contacted, use my mic, use my mic. I contacted Ms. Turner King. She deals with this more often than I did. In pulling statute, we believe that it can be used for that because it will be used for operating expenses. So she did not have an issue with it in looking at statute. I agree with that.
Okay. And as I don't have a law degree, I'm going to trust the law experts that do. All right, thank you. So as a reminder, so we were also, before we left for a quick recess, we had the motion, Counselor Hawk's motion. So, and Michelle, you were saying that we needed to, to clean that up a little?
Yes, because we haven't voted yet on the overall edit, economic development lit. Counselor Hawk's motion is to move the medical amount, which is currently in the general fund, to the correctional lit. So that's the amendment you'll be voting on. First, that amendment.
Okay. Okay, yes, Counsel Wilt.
Does that amendment specifically imply, then, that it's not in here?
No, we'll have to come back and remove that.
Okay. Okay.
Unless you wanna add that little tagline to it.
I thought it did, but no, got it.
Let me just take that line item and put it down to zero and then move on.
What I would do, but.
Right now, it's in general, if we, if we take the line item that's in this and put it down to zero, then we can move forward.
Can we not move it at the same time?
She's gonna do a friendly, friendly change to the amendment that she's proposed, I believe.
Okay, so then I'm gonna look to Counselor Hawke to see what friendly amendment you have.
Well, I'm just thinking, rather than making that difficult, just take that line item or medical expenses, just put it to zero.
Yep. Yep.
That we're adding to it.
Open up now. I, I second that, or is there a second, or can't we just all say yes, okay, and move on? Because I think we can't vote on it since this is.
All right, so do you want me to kinda restate what I think you're doing?
Because it's all like, playing tennis match right now.
Laihooa. I think this is what's going on, is that the medical services amount of 1,675,277 in the general fund is to be moved to the correctional lit fund of 1233. And then we're also going to zero out the medical services amount in the proposed edit budget.
Works. Okay. So we got, we got it. So, but it still does not change the fact that we cannot use bituminous in services, and we can only put it in supplies.
Correct.
Got it. All right, I just wanted to make sure.
I don't think anybody knows that for certain. I don't think anybody knows that for certain. I asked the question.
I'm gonna, as chair, I'm gonna ask our Lisa Ridge Highway Department to, let's, let's listen to experts tonight. So you are?
Add it to a contractual line, because we can contract out most of our paving. I just wasn't tying CCMG to the fund, in case you didn't get the grant. But you could also, you could have a line of bituminous that's used for materials, which we do lay materials. Or you could have a contractual line, because we do contract out most of our paving, either or. You could split it in half.
So we can use it in services?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your expertise on that. Um, all right, so.
Okay, so on the amendment?
Yes.
With regards to the medical services, is what the vote is going to be for right now?
For right now, and after that, then we have other things that we can do. Get it, got it, good. All right, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
No.
Counselor Crosley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Fidel.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
I would like to make a motion, then.
What would your motion be?
My motion would be to add a bituminous line to services.
Do we wanna call it bituminous? I think we need to call it contractual.
We're gonna call it contractual, and then in little air quotes and parentheses, we will breathe the word bituminous.
Thanks.
Just forget that part. We're gonna call it contractual, and we're gonna add it to services. And the amount is gonna be 510,257 dollars.
Second. That was enough money to put in the million.
Beg pardon, I'm second.
Is there a second?
There is.
Thanks.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, and can you clarify, Counselor Wiltz? That, because between the two, that equals the 1 million dollars.
Exactly. We, we just added a line in supplies for 489,743 dollars. So the 510,257 would make it a million.
1 million dollars. Look at that math, that's math. All right. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns on this amendment? Yes, Counselor?
I just wanna say that this is the classic problem solving we do through this messy mudball. And it's good to see it at the end of this process, hopefully.
Thank you.
And Lisa Ridge looks like she might be smiling a little, and that might help. They'll tell us.
You'll know tomorrow when there's a.
If not, there's a. There's a punching bag for that. Okay, all right. Last call for any other comments or questions related to this amendment. Seeing none. May we please have a roll call vote? Thank you.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crosley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, 6-0.
Okay. And then we come back to the overall, the original, because we went through the sequel, the remix, the trilogy, and all of the abba. So now we're gonna come back to the OG, which is what Counselor Iverson, myself, and Michelle worked on. Okay. Yes, Counselor Iverson.
Do you have the updated spreadsheet that we can display on the screen with the updated totals and the new lines? Because that was a very confusing 45 minutes.
Okay, yes. You can see where highway bituminous was added, 489,743. And then we removed the medical, and in, in its place, we put contractual for the highway at 510,257. So that changed your services amount to 667,719. So now we have a grand total in edit of 4,667,719.
Okay. Bottom line is way down bottom. Oh, okay, yeah, I see it, never mind. All right, so is there any other final counsel comment or questions on this item? Yes, Counselor Wiltz.
I just wanna thank you and Counselor Iverson and staff for working on this. I know it's frustrating to see it pulled apart when you've put a lot of effort in ahead of time. And I truly appreciate having it put together to work with. So I, I just wanted to make that clear.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Yes, Counselor Hawke.
Okay, I'm, I'm seeing something that says general, 1,319, whatever. Should I assume that means that's something that's coming out of the general fund?
That is the total of all supply lines in the general fund.
Okay, so it's general, but you mean general supplies?
Yes, yeah, the supplies are, yeah, supplies. So we're taking all of the supply lines out of general, turning them to zero, and then it's moving to here.
And I would just wanna make sure we all understand that the bottom line does not mean that that fixed our, that's not gonna fix our deficit for general. So, you understand? I mean, you're gonna be working on deficits, maybe in the others, but general, we had a deficit at 4,700,000. Now, since we just moved over the medical, that's going to reduce. That, then, does reduce the deficit. But I'm not sure these others are, are doing what we had hoped to be doing. So anyway, there you go.
Well, again, the night is still young, so if anybody doesn't like what they hear here, and we need to figure out some things, by all means, let's do motions. That being said, now we can go to public comment. If there's anybody that would like to make public comment on this item, please entertain ourselves here and come forward to the lectern here in the Night U Hill Room, or you can raise your hand via teams. All right, and seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Crosley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1.
Thank you. All right, next up is Item B.
Counsel, I'd like to open Fund 1,000-0226, County General Probation, and make the following amendments. Reduce account line 11,422, pretrial service officer to zero. Reduce account line 11,423, pretrial service officer to 73,874 dollars. Reduce account line 1,4235, pretrial services offered officer to zero. Reduce account line 1,4236, pretrial services officer to zero. Reduce account line 1,8101, FICA to 184,851 dollars. And reduce account line 1,8202, perf to 327,616 dollars.
Second.
All right, Michelle.
Yes, counsel received an email from the probation, the Judge Decoffe with regards to an amount of money in a pretrial grant fund. And so that budget, I'm going to, was just received today to the probation office. So, um, let's see. This is the budget right here, it's been broken down, that Counselor Iverson just read. So the total of that new budget amount that we're going to reduce out of general fund, oh, didn't do the math, sorry. It's 310, pardon? So that, that's the amount that we're gonna be reducing out of the general fund.
Look at that. Just look at that, okay. And congratulations to probation for doing that, getting that, and helping us in the 11 o'clock hour. I think that's the first time we've all seen a smile on some of our faces this evening. All right, so, tired and I'm cracking jokes now. See, Counselor Hawke has her hand up, and you may proceed.
Right, I just wanted to make it clear, it's my understanding they're going to move some positions that they presently had fairly recently moved over to general fund. And they will not, there's not, we're not talking about they're gonna hire new people. They're gonna try to put people back over in to this. Now, it's still, there's still more people put in general fund than they took, that this is gonna take care of. But I wanted to also call your attention the fact, according to the email that Kim Shell sent to us, that this does not cover their, the insurance fund. And so the insurance will still be sitting over there, coming back, that self-insurance fund will still be in the county general. And if I understood, if I misunderstood this in all my conversations, I hope.
So I'm gonna, I don't wanna put you on the spot, Ms. Brady, but because Counselor Hawke may mention of what she did, would you please clarify anything that you've heard and, and set us straight, please? Again, we're listening to experts here.
Thank you. So what is your question? I'm not understanding.
First off, I wanted to make a clarification that this is not for hiring new people.
Correct.
This is from moving what had previously, recently been put over in general fund from a loss, a grant fund. And so you'll choose.
So these are folks who, they had previously been paid from a community corrections grant from the Department of Corrections. And we just received notice, as did all other pretrial programs in the state, that the DOC has chosen to defund pretrial programs across Indiana. So any Indiana county that had a pretrial program funded by the DOC was, went from whatever the dollar amount was to zero. And our dollar amount that was funded by the DOC was the, the amount that I just said we.
Right.
Right.
But to be clear, it, there's nothing in this new grant. I mean, it's a total, so they could put anything in that they decided they wanted to.
It's not just a total, it's, we had to give them a budget.
I, I get that.
Okay.
Okay. But here's what I'm saying, because in the absence of Councilor David Henry, when he was trying to put in place that all grants would have to be all inclusive, just as a reminder, this does not include the insurance. Not that we don't appreciate this, but it still means that for these folks, that insurance is still gonna be sitting in that general fund.
Well, Marty, just to clarify, that this extra money was not planned for. This, this actually came out of the Indiana Supreme Court's budget. This was not, there was, there's an actual line item in the state's budget for the Supreme Court for pretrial. This is in addition to that, so this is just another operating budget. And so therefore, they just are trying to help make some departments whole who lost the DOC grant, because some counties were not able to use that money, it reverted back. And so they wanted to know before any of this money went to any county, is what is your county gonna contribute? Because we're not gonna give you all of it if, if your county's not gonna contribute. So we told them your, the county was contributing the health insurance. So they gave us the exact dollar amount that we lost from the DOC, because our county did contribute the health insurance.
And for the clarification, I'm just wanting to make sure I understand it correctly. This is only for one year, because they went into their own funds and pulled something together to assist.
Correct.
But that's not for next, not for the following year.
That's correct.
This is just so we need to recognize this one time only. And it's up to you to decide who to put over there. That's up to, a department has to decide where they're gonna move somebody into a grant fund, because once a grant's gone, the position could very well be gone in future. You can see what we're up against. And I just wanted to make sure that we were both on the same page, I think we are.
It seems we are, okay, yeah, I just, I wasn't, couldn't hear very well back there, wasn't sure what you were saying.
It's terrible, isn't it?
Yeah, so just, so, that's it? Okay, okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Counselor Iverson.
So I just wanna make sure that people don't miss how fundamentally important this is, that when we're talking about cuts at the state level, that means we're looking at a $295,000 cut, not for a service that folks generally maybe use all the time, but everyone in this community benefits from, because pretrial services literally has an impact, ripple impact throughout our entire society. We lose pretrial services, there's a whole host of things that are gonna be happening in our justice system and in our broader community that I don't think folks really understand how influential this cut was. The Indiana Supreme Court really saved the day. So, you know, for the justices and their staff, thank you so much for awarding this grant. And we, we are deeply thankful and grateful that we're able to offer pretrial services in 2026. And, and also thank you to the probation office's staff. As we got the emails, they kept, were coming in really quickly, a lot of numbers came in really quickly, and that helped us take care of this tonight, so thank you, thank you, thank you to you and your staff.
Yeah, I'm not gonna hold you, but the, the big thing is, I, I, I guess I was kinda, maybe my hair clip was too tight for me to understand here. So again, I just wanna say, thank you. Because when, I, I will say, like, when all hope was lost and trying to figure out a lot of this stuff, this came in, again, at the 11 o'clock hour. And this is actually something that made my day, to see this come through, and it made me smile. Again, as I stated, I think this might be the first time, and probably a month and a half, that I really have had a genuine smile on my face. And so this brings me joy to hear that. So I'm very thankful for this, and we are working on 26. We are working on 26, that's all we got in front of us, 2026, y'all, that's it. All right, Counselor Wiltz.
I wanted to ask, because we just budgeted the self-insurance into personnel in the lit, isn't, doesn't that, is that paying for those self-insurance lines, or is that different?
There, okay, so we have a total amount of 7 million dollars in. There, okay, so we have a total amount of $7 million in general fund.
For self insurance?
For self insurance.
So only two was moved over?
Only 2 million was over. So whether it, you know, that's the probation or whatever, that's the whole of the general fund.
Let's just say that the probation ones got moved over.
Okay.
Just kidding, that's all good.
Anybody else have any other questions, comments on this item here?
Yes, I do.
Oh, oh, sorry, Counselor Hock.
When does this take effect? I mean, should we do that for the rest of this year? I mean, is it like from a year to year or when, when's a, when's a timeframe for this?
January 1st.
Okay, thanks.
So we all, okay. So 2026 includes January 1st, 2026 through December 31st, 2026, whole calendar year. Not a leap year, so it's 365, okay. All right, so we're gonna go to public comment on this item. If you, again, would like to make public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room or you can raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor Fidle?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous 6-0.
Thank you.
Madam President, I would like to make it clear that many of our grants start mid-year and that's the reason why, for the reason for question. Yes, I think we all know, January 1 of next year is next year.
I didn't say anything different, so take that as you will. Next up, item C.
Counsel, this is a long one, so. Counsel, I would like to open the following funds and make the following amendments. Infund 1,000-0380 County General Jail. Reduce the account line 16031 Captain to zero. Reduce account line 16032 Captain to zero. Reduce account line 16033 Captain to zero. Reduce account line 17203 Shift Pay to $70,967. Reduce account line 17308 CERT Specialty Pay to $15,970. Reduce account line 17309 Investigator Specialty Pay to $3,470. Reduce account line 17310 Continual Training to $16,226. Reduce account line 18101 FICA to $384,037. And reduce account line 18201 Perf to $701,119. Infund 1,000-0309 Employee Services. Reduce account line 18001 Self Insurance to $5,136,250 simultaneously. Infund 1233-0000 Lit Correctional. Create account line 16031 Captain and set that line to $88,396. Create account line 16032 Captain and set the line to $82,218. Create account line 16033 Captain and set the line to $80,159. Increase account line 17203 Shift Pay to $12,533. Create account line 17304 EMT Specialty Pay and set the line to $1. Create account line 17306 Training Officer Specialty Pay and set the line to $1. Create account line 17308 CERT Specialty Pay and set the line to $2,060. Create account line 17309 Investigator Specialty Pay and set the line to $1,030. Increase account line 17310 Continual Training and set the line to $2,774. Create account line 17313 Hearing Officer Team Member Pay and set the line to $1. Increase account line 18001 Self Insurance to $148,500. Increase account line 18101 FICA to $50,950. And increase account line 18201 Perf to $93,718.
Second.
All right, Michelle, please proceed.
Yes, Counselor Hock requested a, a possible movement of a position into the correctional lit. And so then when I went and was going in and looking and was reviewing the, the amounts that they had, I thought maybe for a possible, you know, one time, we could move three positions, which is the captains. And if I'm correct, I believe that these positions are exempt. So they do not get, they don't get the overtime. So with that, I worked with Jordan Miller with regards to the, which, what they would be. And then he also said that these particular positions have certain additional supplementals that come with it. So we worked with that and so we have reduced certain amounts within the general fund, which will total $363,441. And so then we moved those amounts into the lit correctional. And that's 364,700. There is a increase of, I can't even do the math right now, $1,259. And that is due to, there are nine people now in the lit correctional. And so there is the possibility that one of these nine people may qualify for an additional supplemental. So there is a, that additional amount has been added for that potential that could possibly happen in 2026. So that's just giving them that little bit of cushion up. That way they don't have to come back immediately at the beginning of the year if somebody qualifies between now and the first of the year.
Okay, I'm gonna look over here to my left to see if anybody has any questions or comments. Nope, seeing none. Yes, Counselor Hock.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for working on this. I think it makes a huge difference because we're actually talking about reducing the deficit with this. But since it is going over to the jail correctional lit, it's the proper place for it to be. So I don't think we should suggest that it may be one time only because these people will still want a paycheck in 2027. So I, I wouldn't want anybody to think we're going to move it back to general next year because next year is not going to be any better than this year, folks. But we'll just need to find a landing spot for everyone. But I do appreciate that. And then once we vote on this, then I want to go ahead and, and move forward with moving the medical over there as well. And then if we can get a toll for the two.
I just want to say, well, you already took care of removing the medical. We, we did that in that one motion, it was a huge motion, so we've already done it.
You, you did, you say what kind, line item and everything? I thought we just said we were going to move it, but I thought we still have to hold on.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, yes, Counselor Iverson.
So I don't know why you laugh every time you say my name.
You know, I, I think I've lost my mind, it's a full moon and so I'm just trying to keep going.
So again, this, this budget, or this deficit reduction move is really important, not only because this does move us in the right direction, but because this, again, highlights how collaborative this budget process has been. Counselor member Hock put forward this item. We worked on it, made sure that our partners were, were contacted. I just really am happy that we continue item after item, to have items come before us that, that multiple council members, multiple staff members worked on. So this is, this is another win for us, I think.
Thank you. All right, um, yeah, in, in the spirit of moving or making motions and doing this, yes. Congratulations to Counselor Hock for doing this and bringing this forward here. My, what it took for us to get, or the correctional tax that we raised last year, where majority of us voted in favor of it and some of us didn't. So look at how a whole difference a year makes and look at how we are all benefiting from that tax increase. So with that being said, if anybody would like to make public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room or you can raise your hand via teams. Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Fidle?
Yes.
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous 6-0.
All right, thank you. Next up, item D.
Counsel, I would like to open fund 1,000-0068 County General Commissioners and make the following amendments. Reduce account line 1,068 Office Manager to $1. Reduce account line 18101 FICA to $39,042. And reduce account line 18201 Perf to $71,436.
Second.
All right, Michelle, I'll look to you for this item.
Um, this was a recommendation that came in from Counselor Henry. I'm gonna put this on the screen so everyone can see. Hang on. It's this position right here. So this was a recommendation that came in from Counselor Henry to reduce this account line in, for the, in the general fund under the commissioner's budget. And that's all I know. It, it just came in as an email, as one of his recommendations.
Yes, Counselor Iverson.
Do, do we know, has anybody from the commissioner's office been contacted or talked to about this? I, as a liaison, was not consulted on this item.
I, I, I cannot tell you that. It just came in as a recommendation in an email from Counselor Henry.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor Hock.
Is this the vacant position?
Yes, this is the vacant position.
They asked to refill it?
They have not yet. I, I, I believe during budget sessions that they said that they could muddle through. So that may be why he did that, but I.
It's not on the list.
No, it is not on the list.
Okay.
So it still would be a part of the hiring freeze that the county implemented.
That is correct, it's been vacant for a while.
Right.
And they have not asked to fill it.
Right, and I think as the liaison, the second liaison to that, yes, I wasn't also consulted with this. But the fact that if we, I mean, again, with the hiring freeze, if somebody wanted to bring it to the table for us to have the conversation, we can, they send that email, we respond back to that email. If none of us respond to that email, then that means that the hiring freeze is intact.
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
So doing this kind of defeats the purpose.
Okay, all right, yes, Counselor Iverson.
Madam President, I withdraw my motion.
Concur.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, um, what? You, you withdrew the motion that we all sent here and said the commissioners was going with it? Which, is that?
I did withdraw my motion.
Okay, shall I put the motion on the floor then?
We had it, but it was withdrawn. Like, he just said it earlier and then he withdrew it and then Counselor Deckard.
Concur.
Concurd. So we are, I, I guess we already had it, but, yeah.
I'd like to, if there's no, if we haven't, if we don't have a motion on the floor at all about this?
We already had it and he withdrew it. So then there's no motion and then we.
There's now no motion on the floor.
So it's withdrawn and actually we get to move on to the next item.
And that, not necessarily, somebody else can put a motion on the floor.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily mean it'll pass, but sure.
And here's what I would like to do, I'd like to table this until Counselor member Henry returns, which he plans to be here shortly, and then he can bring it up as to why he presented this. So I move to table.
A second, second.
Okay, we, so we have a motion and a second to table this item until Counselor Henry returns to the building. Is there any other further questions? Okay.
I just want to put out there, I did receive a text message that Angie does not have a problem with reducing that line. So if you want to move forward with reducing that line to the dollar, she's, she's okay with it.
Okay, so since she said it, would somebody like to? Yes, Counselor Iverson.
Oh, a bunch of ping ponging here. Counsel, I would like to open fund 1,000-0068 County General Commissioners and make the following amendments. Reduce account line 1,068 Office Manager to $1. Reduce account line 18101 FICA to $39,042. And reduce account line 18201 Perf to $71,436.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Counselor Hock, second. Yes, Counselor Iverson.
It is really important that liaisons are consulted on things like this. And, and I'm not blaming anybody, there's no shade here. It just, it, it would be really nice to have a heads up on, on this stuff. And I know this is, this is my fault for not flagging this because it was in the, the agenda that was released, but man.
Okay, and that would go for all the previous things too, right? Because, yeah, I didn't know about a lot of, okay. Just saying.
So shade going all around. All right, so that being said, is there any other further discussion on this? Seems like Ms. Purdy is okay with that. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, if you would like to make public comment on this item, you can come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room or you can raise your hand via teams. Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yep.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidle?
Yes.
Counselor Hock? Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous 6-0.
All right, item E.
Counsel, I'd like to open fund 1135-0000 Cumulative Bridge and make the following amendments. Reduce account line 39403 Rockport Road Bridge Number 308 to $1. Reduce account line 39406 Eagleson Avenue Bridge Number 922 to $1.
Second.
Michelle?
Yes, Lisa Ridge approached me tonight. This was the last minute. She needed these account lines just reduced to a dollar due to some auditor recommendations.
Riche, you need to say anything else? You don't have to if you don't want to. Or need to.
So I'll be coming to you in October, November to appropriate the lines in the grant fund for the construction matches. So I tried to catch Kim so we wouldn't have to go through a deappropriation.
Got it, okay, thank you. All right, Counsel, do you have any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, public comment time. You can come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room or you can raise your hand via teams to speak on this item. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hock?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidle?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous 6-0.
Thank you. Next up is item six.
See, Counsel, I would, all right. I would like to amend Resolution 2025-42, the temporary hiring freeze exemption list to include the following positions that were inadvertently missed in the original resolution list. This is the two positions prosecutor part-time hourly 1,000-17801-0009 part-time and jail corrections officer 1,0010695-0380 full-time.
Second.
Michelle?
Yes, um, so last we, week? Okay, so last week you did a resolution for a temporary hiring freeze. Molly had sent out emails to everyone to say if you're in the progress, you know, that kind of thing. These two positions were missed and all we're doing is just adding them to the list of exemptions. So one of them has already been hired, which is the corrections officer. They had already been extended a, um, um, an offer. And the part-time hourly, I believe, was an, like an in-house. It was a, a legal clerk moved into a part-time hourly position. So those have already taken place, they just got left off of the, the list as in progress.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking over here to my left to see if anybody has any questions.
I was just pointing to Marty.
Oh, I know, I just wanted to make sure nobody over here needed to speak first. Okay, yes, Counselor Hock?
Yes, received a, a call. Yes, received a call today from our treasurer to remind us that she must have part-time help during collection time. And so we need to make sure that she knows that she's covered because they don't have enough staff on hand to do all of the collections, you know, the people lined up to pay their taxes, add insult to injury and make them wait forever because there's nobody to take care of them, to take their money. So whatever we need to do, and I haven't studied the entire thing, you know, it looked like there were a lot of exemptions made, et cetera, et cetera. But I've had a lot of other things on my plate. But I will say that we have got to make sure that the treasurer has a right to go ahead and do, as the treasurers have always done, they have part-time people coming in to cover collection time. And that's just the way it works.
I guess I'm a little confused because I want to make sure, lots of things have happened since then. We, it was towards the end of the marathon meeting last week where Ms. Turner King sat here and worked on that and displayed on screen. I'm not sure if all of us were still here in that moment or.
Was it eleven thirty? I left at eleven.
I mean, yeah, we were still here. So I, I guess I'm a little, either way, there was a email that went out ahead of time that talked to, or that went to departments that basically said, hey, if you would like, or if you're in the process of doing something like this, to please send an email. And then it was in that discussion last week when we went to public comment. And we had a parks person say, hey, hold on, I'm in the process of that too and I was left off of that. So, yeah, so again, with that being said, with this case that Councilor Hawke has brought up, Michelle, that resolution got sent out via email to everybody explaining the situation. So again, if a person wanted to make sure that they can hire for a position, they contact you, you send the email to council. Council all reviews it and if nobody objects, then hiring freeze. But if somebody says, whoa, whoa, we want to make sure that the part-time person in the treasurer's office is something that is taken care of, then they say yes. Then that comes to the council on an agenda at a future meeting for all of us to do that. So then therefore, if there, if somebody sends an email about that, then the hiring freeze doesn't pertain to that particular individual.
Correct.
Got it?
Yes, and I did, I did receive an email from the chief deputy treasurer that they had a part-time position. I explained to them what they needed to do and I have yet to receive an email back with regards to making that request, so.
I received the phone call.
But the process is to receive an email.
Correct.
So that the entire county.
I just wanted to share with you what the department.
But let's not be dismissive here. So you received the phone call and the process is, it really should go to the council staff because if a phone call doesn't translate into an email, we miss something and somebody will get blamed for it. And so there's processes and steps with that. We might not like it, but this is how we're doing. And if there needs to be amendments to a resolution, guess what? We can all do that. So, okay. I just want to make sure we're all crystal clear. I know this is like something that is brand new and I've gotten phone calls and questions about this. And again, it's a, it's a thing that we're, we're working out. So if we figure out it's not working out for some, we can always come back and revisit this. This is not set in stone. Got it?
Question?
Yes.
Would it, would it assess if we said seasonal workers? This would not pertain to seasonal workers because I think that's what we have with the parks department. They have seasonal workers and so forth. Anyway, that is just a suggestion. You folks can deal with Kathy Smith. I'll send her your way.
Well, you can too because you are one of seven people that are on county council. So that being said, is there a public comment on this item? You can come forward to the lectern here in the Natu Hill Room or you can raise your hand via teams. Right, sorry. You'll have up to three minutes. I forgot to say that. Yes.
No, I just want to speak from, so our office is kind of the gatekeeper of the hiring situation. And the more clear that you all can be with what you want that policy to look like, the easier it is for us to manage that because, like Kim said, I also received, the treasurer's office reached out to me today and I explained to them the process of what that looks like. And your resolution clearly says seasonal and temporary and part-time people. So I redirected them to the process for the resolution. Whether that, you know, should, whether they intended for this person to be on your list or whatever, you know, the timing is all very new to people. So we are trying to educate. But it is difficult for our office to interpret things that you would like, however you want it to be. So if you can just clearly state, we're trying to be very diligent about pointing back to your resolution and making people go through the process. And that's, that's the best that we can do on our side when we get people who are sending us information, if that helps you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Kylie Ferris, election supervisor. I also am kind of concerned with the hiring freeze as well as for early voting workers. They are considered seasonal employees of the county since they are working the twenty-eight days during the primary and additionally another twenty-eight days in the general if they choose to work both. Main question is, what can I look forward to expect from you guys as we're looking at nearly two hundred people that will be coming through as poll workers for the primary and general? Are we submitting those to you guys all at one time? Are we submitting them individually? I just need to know the process so that I can get it kind of set in my office to figure out how and when I need to start getting these people to come in to do paperwork. Because in the past, it's been as they're adding to the list, we come in, they do the paperwork and then we send everything over to HR.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, see, he is coming back here.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of logistics to this that we are happy to figure out a way to simplify things and make it as streamlined as we can for departments and for you all so that you're not getting a lot of requests. And then the only other thing I wanted to clarify is that for our purposes, for those seasonal employees, we do terminate them each year after the end of their, essentially their seasonal stint, if you will. So then they are technically a rehire the next year. So that is something that we'll need to figure out a process for that and work with you all on what that looks like. But a treasurer's office tax time employee would be someone, a seasonal parks employee would also be someone. So I think that I'm happy to work with the council office to figure out what the logistics of that look like so that it's not us having to come to you for every single employee. We can kind of group some of those things together if that makes sense for you all.
Yes, Councilor Deckard.
Thank you. Well, I was just gonna make a general comment because this discussion has brought back some memories of when, years ago, we were trying to address election worker pay. And our goal was actually to fix election worker pay issues where there were some, some complications. And so some councillors got in a room and we were like, I think we were saying things like absentee worker A, B, C. We had this matrix worked out. We were feeling hot to go. We worked on this thing for like three and a half hours. We get out, we patted ourselves on the back, got down the road. And literally within twenty-four hours, there was a belief and perception that we were going after and targeting election workers. So one thing I would just want to say is we obviously have to help E and our election director figure out the nuances of this in the resolution going forward. I don't think that's gonna get done here. But as we figure that out, one thing I just want to say clearly is we're not cutting election workers. We're having election workers. We believe in free and fair elections and all those things, and that is the goal. So sometimes that perception starts out there. I don't know where that starts or what mystery land that comes from and alleyways, but that's not what this is. It's us watching and monitoring this thing that we've been yelling and screaming about all night and for the last like six weeks, seven weeks or eight weeks. So it's just part, more part of the mud to figure out for the process.
So again, I know that we have the, the motion is to add the prosecutor and the jail, to add those to the exempt list. So I will also like to say that maybe myself and Michelle and the liaison for employee services can maybe sit down and discuss this because I do know that there are, these are legit concerns. Again, we are not so stuck in our ways that, you know, we can't see through the weeds that we might be, you know, complicating things by trying to overhaul something. Because I know, you know, there might be a point for, you know, twenty-four hour responders. The critical care people could also potentially be a part of this as well. So I guess what I would like to say is if we can try to maybe sit down and work in the meantime to kind of, you know, maybe pull department heads and electeds to figure out like, or try to figure out what is the confusion? Because again, in my mind, I'm thinking things are all clear. But again, I'm not so stagnant in my way that I might see that I could be putting up a barrier for somebody else by trying to overhaul something. So again, I would like for us to maybe try to work on that and see if there are any other confusions that we can kind of weed out as we, you know, continue to finesse it. Because again, you can always make changes to the resolution. Okay? So thank y'all for that. All right, so with that being said, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Councilor Hawke? Councilor Crossley?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Fidle?
Yes.
Councilor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, six, zero.
Okay, and so I was trying to make sure I wasn't missing anything else on the agenda. Please don't add anything else. All right, so with that being said, this was a special session. It was very much special indeed. And next week, October fourteenth, is our final adoption meeting. And then the auditor's office, I'm sure, will provide us with some numbers of some things that we change tonight. Again, many thanks to all of our employees of Monroe County Government who came in and voiced your concerns. We heard you loud and clear. But we also still have some work to do in twenty-six and beyond. So with that, oh boy, we are adjourned. Thank you.